The Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the 30th Public Hearing of the Royal Commission into Violence, Abuse, Neglect and Exploitation of People with Disability. This public hearing is concerned with guardianship, substituted and supported decision making. And the hearing is being held at the Novotel, Sydney Olympic Park Hotel in Sydney, and it will take place over five days during this week. And as I've just indicated, the hearing will address the experiences of people with disability with guardianship, administration and substituted and supported decision making. We commence with an acknowledgement of country. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are gathered today, the Wonggol people. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to any First Nations people who are participating in or following these proceedings. I'm joined this week in the Sydney Hearing Room by Commissioners John Ryan, AM, on my left, and Commissioner Alistair McEwan, AM, on my right. Senior Counsel assisting the Royal Commission at this public hearing is Ms Kate Eastman, AMFC. She appears with Ms Catherine Gleeson and Ms Winnie Lu of Council. Ms Eastman will shortly make an opening statement. Several parties have been given leave to appear at this hearing, and I will invite their legal representatives to announce their appearances shortly. This public hearing will examine the experiences of people with disability, particularly people with intellectual disability or cognitive impairment, of the guardianship and administration regimes in force in the Australian states and territories. We shall hear evidence from people who have been subjected to guardianship or administration orders and thereby deprived in whole or in part of the right to make their own decisions on matters affecting their daily lives. It might be useful to commence with an explanation of some terms that we will hear quite frequently during this week. Guardianship and administration orders are legal decisions made by courts or tribunals that can allow a nominated person or institution to make decisions on another person's behalf. Guardianship orders can cover decisions about a range of personal matters, including where a person lives, the services provided to that person, health care and other day-to-day matters. Administration or financial management orders authorise decisions about financial matters. A guardian or administrator can be a partner of the person, a family member or friend of the person with disability, or someone who has some other connection with that person. As a last resort, a public official may be appointed as a guardian or administrator. These officials have a range of different names in the states and territories, but they're usually designated as public guardians or public trustees. Substitute decision making refers to processes and regimes that involve one person making decisions on another person's behalf, thereby removing legal capacity from the person on whose behalf decisions are made. A substitute decision maker can be appointed in certain circumstances against the will of the person who is subjected to the regime. Decisions can be based on a judgment by a decision maker, such as a tribunal, as to what is in the best interests of the person concerned instead of giving effect to the person's own will and preferences. Supported decision making refers to processes that assist people to exercise their own autonomy and legal capacity by supporting them to make decisions about their own lives. As those who've been following the Royal Commission will know, we pay particular attention to the provisions of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, the CRPD. The article of the CRPD of most relevance to this particular hearing is Article 12. It provides as follows, and I'll quote its terms. One, states' parties reaffirm that persons with disabilities have the right to recognition everywhere as persons before the law. Two, states' parties shall recognise that persons with disabilities enjoy legal capacity on an equal basis with others in all aspects of life. Three, states' parties shall take appropriate measures to provide access by persons with disabilities to the support they require in exercising their legal capacity. And finally, four, states' parties shall ensure that all measures that relate to the exercise of legal capacity provide for appropriate and effective safeguards to prevent abuse in accordance with international human rights law. Such safeguard shall ensure that measures relating to the exercise of legal capacity respect the rights, will and preferences of the person, are free from conflict of interest or undue influence and are proportional and tailored to the person's circumstances and also apply for the shortest time possible and are subject to review by a competent, independent and impartial authority or judicial body. Let me provide a little background, and Ms Eastman will provide considerably more. The Royal Commission has received 371 submissions on the subject of guardianship and supportive decision making. Many of these submissions criticise the operation of guardianship and administration regimes in force in the Australian states and territories. The submissions have referred, among other things, to the frequency with which people with disability are subjected to orders which deny their capacity to make their own decisions. Instead of these substitute decision making orders being made as a last resort after all other options have been considered, orders are frequently made by courts or tribunals in circumstances where the person with disability, given appropriate supports, is quite capable of making decisions affecting their own lives, including financial decisions. We will hear evidence during this week about the importance of assisted decision making, in particular from Ms Justine O'Neill, the Chief Executive Officer of the Council for Intellectual Disability. She points out in her statement that without support, a person with intellectual disability might lose their decision-making rights either formally or informally. She explains that the challenge is to maximise the number of persons who get the support they need to be fully involved in their own decision making. Ms O'Neill identifies the difficulties in the path of building the decision-making capacity of people with intellectual disability and makes suggestions to address these difficulties. It's important to appreciate that guardianship and administration regimes have attracted a great deal of attention in recent years by law reform bodies and in some cases by Australian legislatures. In the past decade, the Australian Law Reform Commission and law reform bodies in New South Wales, Victoria, Queensland, Tasmania and the ACT have all conducted careful reviews of the existing legislation in their particular jurisdictions and proposed reforms to the legislation. As recently as three weeks ago, the South Australian Law Reform Institute released a 400-page report reviewing the operation of the Aging and Adult Safeguarding Act 1995 of South Australia. Some of this work has borne fruit. For example, the Guardianship and Administration Act 2019 of Victoria comprehensively reformed the law of guardianship and administration in that state. In the second reading speech for the legislation, the then Attorney General of Victoria explained that the bill drew not only on the work of the Victorian Law Reform Commission's report on guardianship, but also drew on the CRPD, the Australian Law Reform Commission's report and other Victorian legislation that had been reformed prior to the 2019 act. This hearing will not examine the various law reform proposals, however, the Royal Commission is carefully considering all the reports together with the legislative reforms that have been enacted with a view to informing the contents of our final report, which is due in September 2023. We have borne in mind the direction in our terms of reference to have regard to the findings and recommendations of previous relevant inquiries and reports. We will be taking into account general principles derived mostly, but not entirely, from work done by other bodies or from legislation that is already in force in some Australian jurisdictions. Without in any way being exhaustive, the principles will include the following. First, a person with disability who may require support to make decisions should be provided with appropriate support to enable that person, so far as practicable in the circumstances, to make and participate in decisions affecting them, express their will and preferences and develop their decision-making ability. Second, legislation should recognise and respect the role of informal supporters and support networks that provide support for decision making. Thirdly, the powers, functions and duties under legislation should be carried out and performed in a way which is the least restrictive of a person's freedom of decision and imposes as few constraints as possible in the circumstances. And fourthly, legislation should recognise the presumption that a person has decision-making ability, including the provision of relevant and appropriate support when needed, and that this presumption cannot be rebutted simply on the basis of disability. Ms Eastman will shortly outline the evidence that is to be presented at this hearing during the five days. The issues that will be addressed during the hearing include the reasons why substitute decision making and guardianship and administration orders often resorted to before models of supportive decision making are utilised. Secondly, the barriers to implementing supportive decision making, such as the person with disability lacking a network of available support. Thirdly, the safeguards necessary to reduce so far as possible the abuse or exploitation of people with disability by substitute decision makers. Fourthly, the challenges experienced by people with disability who wish to resist or free themselves from guardianship or administration orders. Finally, capacity building measures for people with disability to allow them to make their own decisions. Ms Eastman will explain other issues that will be considered during the course of the hearing. I shall now take appearances.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appear with Ms Catherine Gleeson and Ms Winnie Lu.
Thank you, Ms Eastman. I'll take appearances first from any legal representatives in the room at present. So if they could announce their appearances in a semblance of order, that would be helpful.
May please, my name is Seth, and I appear with Bullock on behalf of the State of Western Australia.
Thank you very much.
May please, Commissioner, my name is Redwood, and I appear with my learned friend Mr Dyke of the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Are there any other appearances within this room? If not, I'll move to appearances remotely, starting with the state of New South Wales. Is there an appearance for the state of New South Wales?
No.
Apparently not. Do we have an appearance from the New South Wales trustee and guardian?
Yes, may please, the Commissioner, my name is Needham, and I appear for the New South Wales trustee and guardian.
Yes, thank you, Ms Needham. I think that I can see Ms Furness now. Can I? Ms Furness, last time I suggested you were on mute, you suggested it wasn't you, it was us, so I don't know who's at fault, but we can't hear you.
Well, I... Can you hear me now?
I'll take it that...
I'm unmuted at times, so...
We'll deem you to have made an appearance, thank you very much. Is there an appearance for the state of Queensland?
Yes, good morning, Chair. My name's MacMillan, initials K, King's Counsel, and I appear instructed by Crown Law.
Thank you, Ms MacMillan. An appearance from the state of Victoria?
May please, the Commissioner, my name is Rebecca Bedford, and I appear for the state of Victoria.
Thank you very much, Ms Bedford. An appearance for the Office of the Public Advocate of Victoria? An appearance for the state trustees of Victoria? And we've had an appearance from Western Australia. Are there any other appearances? Thank you very much. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to make an opening statement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Council assisting also acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands on which we're meeting today and across Australia. We pay our respects to First Nations elders, past, present and emerging, as well as to all First Nations people at this public hearing. Commissioners, there are a significant number of people in the hearing room today, and I acknowledge their presence. And I also acknowledge that many people attending today are coming to this hearing because it raises real and significant issues that have touched their lives. Over the next five days, the Royal Commission will listen to the experiences of people living with cognitive disability and their families about what happens to a person's life when someone else makes decisions for them. This is called substitute decision making. They will tell you about what their day-to-day lives are like when people make decisions about where they live, how and when they spend money, about medical treatment and medical procedures, decisions about legal matters such as making a will or contracts, and in some cases, when and how they can access supports and services. They will tell you about the impact on their life, their privacy, their right to speak out about their experiences, the loss of freedom, the loss of family, friendship and community, and for First Nations people, separation from culture and country. You will hear about the loss of autonomy and the barriers to proving capacity. Commissioners, this week you'll hear a lot about capacity. It's in its everyday use. Capacity means a person's ability to do a particular task or activity. But this hearing, when we talk about capacity, it has a particular legal meaning. Capacity describes both legal standing and legal agency. Legal standing is the ability to hold rights and duties and be recognised as legal persons. Legal agency is the ability to exercise these rights and duties and to do things that have legal effects. For young people and adults, legal capacity means a person's ability to make decisions about their lives. This week you will hear about how a person's capacity is assessed, concepts of fluctuating capacity and changes in a person's capacity as they age or experience trauma or illness. You will hear that legal capacity should not simply be equated with mental capacity, and you will hear that people with cognitive disability should not be assumed to have limited legal capacity in the sense of being able to exercise legal agency. So Commissioners, as you've heard already, there are likely to be many legal words and jargons used in this hearing and over the course of this week. So we have prepared a glossary of terms to explain the meaning of these words and describe the concepts. It's presently available on the Royal Commission's website in relation to this hearing, and people are welcome to download and to use the glossary as we discuss a lot of legal and tricky concepts during the course of this week. Well, Commissioners, historically, society and legal systems have worked to protect people who do not have capacity, including children and people who live with cognitive disability or mental illness. Within the justice system, sometimes Supreme Courts in states and territories use a power known as parent's patria. It's a Latin expression, and it simply means parent of the nation. It's also known as a protective jurisdiction. And with respect to children, judges may substitute parents' wishes and make decisions to protect a child. For adults who are found to be incapable of managing either their personal or financial affairs, a judge may make orders to protect the person. It is accepted that parents' patria power should be exercised only in exceptional circumstances. These powers have been used by judges to make decisions that at times have had profound and significant impact on the lives of people with disability. Just to mention one area. Commissioners, you'll recall Ms Caroline Fromada and Dr Linda Steele's evidence at Public Hearing 17 last year. They spoke about parents' patria power being used to authorise medical procedures with respect to women's reproductive rights. They referred to decisions where judges exercise the power to allow irreversible sterilisation of young women living with an intellectual disability. And these powers have been authorised to allow the termination of pregnancies of women with intellectual disability. The Federal Circuit and Family Court of Australia also exercises these functions with respect to children. And for example, in 2018, the Family Court agreed to an application of the mother of a 17-year-old girl who lived with intellectual disability for a non-consensual sterilisation. For adults, with the development of specific guardianship and administration laws, the tribunals in each state and territory make such decisions and appoint guardians and administrators to make decisions for people who are found not to be capable of their own decision making. At this hearing, we will examine the way Western Australia, Queensland, Victoria and New South Wales guardianship and administration laws work. Can I acknowledge, in preparation for this hearing, we had the opportunity to speak to people across Australia, and so there are some jurisdictions who are not included in this week's hearing, but we are indebted and thank residents of those jurisdictions for their assistance in our preparation for the hearing. Commissioners, there is no national uniform guardianship or administration law in Australia. So broadly speaking, for a person with disability who lacks capacity, it's the state and territory laws that will operate in relation to their circumstances. In general, if a guardianship order is made, then it may be either by way of a private guardian, a family member or other person, or as a last resort, a public guardian who has the power to make some or all decisions for the person. Subject to the scope of the orders, a guardian decides where a person lives, what supports they receive, healthcare matters, the use of restrictive practices, who they can have contact with and a range of day-to-day issues. If administrative or financial management orders are made, another person will manage the financial affairs of the person. Financial management includes making legal decisions about financial affairs and property, and the administrator may be another person or in some cases, the public or state trustee. A key pillar of guardianship and administration law is that these orders are only to be provided or made as a last resort and to be done in the least restrictive manner. With some exceptions, a guardian or an administrator's decision making is guided by the best interests of the person. The concept of best interests is a feature about how decisions are often made around children. One issue you will examine this week will be whether a best interests approach for adults with disability is appropriate or whether guardians and administrators should apply an approach based on a person's will and preferences, which is more consistent with human rights. Commissioner McEwan, in this context, you alerted the Royal Commission to these concerns at the very first hearing of this Royal Commission, and he said this. For far too long, people with disability in Australia have been denied the right to make their own decisions with appropriate support. For far too long, people with disability have been denied the dignity of risk and the freedom to choose how they live their own lives with independence. Our society cannot be allowed to protect people with disability to the extent that they cannot choose to live their own lives as they wish and to experience the consequences of those choices. We must avoid protectionism to the point of not allowing people with disability to take risks as any person would expect to do so in our society. And Commissioner, with those words, you summed up the tension between dignity of risk and the application of best interests. Commissioners, the Australian Guardianship and Administration Council represents state and territory government agencies that have a role in protecting adults in Australia who have decision-making responsibilities for people with disability. Membership includes public guardians, public trustees, public advocates and guardianship tribunals. The Council's annual reports record the data on guardianship and financial administration, applications and also orders made across Australia. Most recent annual report for the period 1 July 2020 to 30 July 2021 records the numbers of applications and orders made. And we've helpfully extracted the chart that appears in the report, and that should come up on the screen now. I won't take you Commissioners through each particular jurisdiction, but Commissioners, you'll see that in relation to the total of applications made in the year 1 July 2020 to 30 June 2021, the total number of applications for both guardianship and administrative or financial management was 24,828 applications. You'll see that the largest numbers of applications occurred in Victoria. In relation to the orders, and so this is the orders following an application, you'll see that the total number of orders made was just under 20,000, being 19,799 orders. So that's a large number of human beings and people and families who were affected not only by applications but also by the orders made in Australia. A review of the Council's annual reports since 2017 and following have told us some information about the trends in relation to both applications and orders. The total applications for guardianship or administration orders in 2017 to 2018 was 22,273. If we look at the present numbers, this represents an increase of 11.5%. In terms of the total orders made for guardianship and administration orders in 2017 to 2018, it was 16,537 orders made. Taking into account the present number of orders made, this represents an increase of almost 20% at 19.7%. In Victoria and Queensland, the numbers of guardianship orders have decreased. On a per capita basis, Victoria and Queensland also have the lowest numbers of guardianship orders compared to other jurisdictions. South Australia and the Northern Territory experienced the highest number of guardianship orders over the four years that were analysed. They've also seen... I'm sorry, I withdraw that. In terms of these jurisdictions, it's not clear why there has been such an increase. This week, Commissioners, you'll hear the perspectives and experiences of people with disability when they have been the subject of applications for guardianship or administrative arrangements. And Commissioners, the evidence you will hear this week will be a tiny snapshot of the issues and allegations raised in submissions and at private sessions about guardianship. in submissions and at private sessions about guardianship and choice and control. This public hearing builds upon the information that you know about from submissions and private sessions, but it also builds upon the evidence that you have already heard at public hearings. For example, you may recall public hearing three in December twenty nineteen. Witness A I describes the many ways choices were made on behalf of her daughter, including when her daughter could go to bed or whether she could have tea or coffee, and you remember her daughter lived in a group home. At that same hearing, Sarah Forbes, the advocacy manager at Valid, told you about a couple who were prevented from being in a same-sex relationship on the basis of a belief that the two people involved lack capacity to consent to that relationship. At public hearing twenty, you heard a service provider suggested that Sophie's parents seek guardianship of Sophie so they could take her phone away from her and prevent her visiting internet dating sites. Commissioners, we have asked the lawyers and advocates from Western Australia, Queensland and Victoria who represent and support people with disability in the guardianship and administration systems to share their experiences and to share some of the case studies that highlight the trends and systemic issues. They will also share their suggestions for change and reform. Chair, you've touched on some of the key issues that are likely to arise from the hearing. And can I just summarise them in this way? These issues will raise the following key themes. People with disability and family members not understanding guardianship or administration systems. People with disability not being aware that an application has been made or consulted about the application, including interim or short-term orders. People not understanding how tribunals work or the evidence relied on in tribunal hearings. This includes not being represented, not having an interpreter, not understanding the legal paperwork. It also includes not being able to follow online or telephone hearings or even having the opportunity to speak at a hearing. Another theme is how tribunals determine if a person has capacity and what appears to be a very heavy reliance on medical assessments. A theme which will emerge is not receiving any reasons for a tribunal's decision and not knowing if there's any option to challenge the decision. Not knowing how long the order will remain and feeling invisible because of the strict confidentiality provisions that apply to guardianship proceedings and feeling silenced. Not understanding a guardian or administrator's role and powers, which may be compounded by the limited personal connection and communication between the person who is subject to the order and the relevant guardian or administrator. One theme that is important in this hearing is to understand cultural safety and cultural responsive approaches. And you'll hear that particularly for First Nations people and people from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds, that they have not experienced cultural safety or cultural responsive approaches. A strong theme is feeling trapped, overly protected and having no dignity of risk. You'll hear about the theme of unreasonable denial of financial autonomy by an administrator or delegate. You'll hear about conflicts of interest, the fees charged by public trustees or public guardians and the lack of transparency about the use of a person's financial resources for administration and sometimes even in litigation. Commissioners, we will examine these themes with the public trustees and the public guardians. And this week, you'll hear from the public advocate, Western Australia, the public trustee of Queensland and the public guardian of Queensland. You'll hear from the state trustee and the public advocate from Victoria, the New South Wales Public Guardian, the Director of Estate Management for New South Wales trustee and from the National Disability Agency. We will ask them about their powers and functions. Commissioner, it's one thing for the law to confer powers. It's another thing to understand how power is used. These agencies have extensive and wide-ranging powers that affect the lives of people, often when they are at their most vulnerable points in life. Understanding power and how power is used is central to understanding the impact that orders concerning guardianship and financial administration may have on a person's life. Commissioners, I know that many people following this hearing would like to see the Royal Commission make findings about their own cases and what happened to their particular family members. But this hearing, we are focusing on the systemic issues to assist the commissioners identify the case for reform and change. For this hearing, we will not be asking the Royal Commission to make particular adverse factual findings as to whether a particular person or government breached the law or breached a policy. So commissioners, I want to turn to another issue which will be significant in this hearing, and Chair, you've touched on this issue in your opening. It is about supported decision-making. We want to discuss a human rights approach, moving from substitute decision-making to supportive decision-making. There are about four point four million people, or just under eighteen percent of the Australian population, who live with disability. Not all people with disability require support in relation to decision-making, but some people do. And the Royal Commission's data team have collated the following data points based on the Australian Bureau of Statistics Survey of Disability, Aging and Carers. First, of people with disability, seventeen percent, around six hundred and eighty-nine thousand people, need assistance to make decisions or think through problems. When this group is split by age, people with disability aged between fifteen and twenty-four years of age are two and a half times more likely to need assistance when making decisions compared to people with disability over the age of twenty-five. Next, people with intellectual disability were three point two times more likely to need assistance compared to the general population with disability. And people with psychosocial disability were three times more likely to need assistance than the general population with disability. If a person with disability needs assistance to make decisions or think through problems, we should not assume they do not have capacity. In this respect, the Royal Commission's terms of reference recognise the human rights of people with disability, including respect for their inherent dignity and individual autonomy. Chair, you referred to the importance of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability to the Royal Commission's work. It recognises the importance of autonomy for people with disability. Article three A says this. Respect for inherent dignity, individual autonomy, including the freedom to make one's own choices and the independence of persons. These are guiding principles. Chair, you referred to Article twelve of the CRPD, and that reaffirms that persons with disabilities have the right to recognition everywhere as persons before the law. Article twelve calls for people with disability to enjoy legal capacity on an equal basis with others in all aspects of life and appropriate measures put in place to provide people with disability access to the support they may require in exercising their legal capacity. In effect, the CRPD identifies supportive decision-making as a right. Commissioners, you are aware that General Comment one made by the CRPD Committee said that Article twelve, in effect, requires the abolition rather than any partial retention of substitute decision-making models. We note there are strongly held views about the interpretation of Article twelve. And commissioners, you'll recall that this was an issue we addressed at public eighteen concerning the implementation of the CRPD into Australian law. You are aware, Australia has made an interpretive declaration with respect to Article twelve and the retention of substitute decision-making. The CRPD Committee has called for Australia to revoke its interpretive declaration. Commissioners, that is not an issue that you will be able to resolve in this hearing. But Chair, as you have said, the Royal Commission has looked carefully at past reports. And one of those reports is the report from twenty fourteen of the Australian Law Reform Commission called Equality, Capacity and Disability in Commonwealth Laws. The report recommended a shift from substituted or substitute decision-making to supported decision-making for people with disability. And the Law Reform Commission recommended reform of Australian laws for a consistent national decision-making set of principles. These principles would recognise the equal right to make decisions and have decisions respected. And supportive decision must be directed by a person's will and preferences. The Law Reform Commission also recommended the introduction of a Commonwealth decision-making model, which consists of supporters who provide support to an individual to make decisions and representatives who are appointed as a last resort and in limited circumstances to make decisions for people based on their will and preferences. This approach recognises that support for decision-making occurs on a spectrum, and it moves away from a binary distinction between supported on one side and substitute on the other side with respect to decision-making. Under a principled approach, a person is supported to maximise their autonomy in making decisions. A person's stated or perceived will and preferences are at the centre of decision-making. The CRPD Committee has said, support means this. It is a broad term that encompasses both informal and formal support arrangements of varying types and intensities. And the committee says, here are some examples for support for decision-making. They include peer support, support persons, advocacy, including self-advocacy, or assistance with communication to assist people in exercising their legal capacity for certain types of decisions. The committee has said, there should be measures relating to universal design and accessibility, such as providing information in an understandable format or access to interpreters to enable people to perform the legal acts required, to open a bank account, conclude contracts or conduct other social transactions. The committee has said, there should be the development and recognition of diverse, non-conventional methods of communication, particularly for people who use non-verbal forms of communication to express their will and preferences. And finally, the ability to plan in advance whereby a person can state their will and preferences, which should be followed at a time when they may not be in a position to communicate their wishes to others. Commissioners, support can be informal, where it be by family members, friends or other networks that give support. Or it can be formal, and these mostly arise in the more formal and legal matters, including proceedings. People with cognitive disability may require support through a more flexible use of procedures when appearing in courts and tribunals. And in effect, it means for those of us who work in courts and tribunals in the law that we need to be flexible and anticipate what changes should be made to make our processes more accessible. Commissioners, this week, you'll hear from people with disability, advocates and representatives from the Council for Intellectual Disability and the Older Persons Advocacy Network about some very concrete and practical ways to exercise supportive decision-making. So if I can turn now to the arrangements for this week. Today, we will focus on Western Australia. And shortly, you'll hear from Anthony from Western Australia, and he will tell you about his experiences assisting his mother, Calara, who is a member of the Stolen Generations. In twenty fifteen, the public advocate was appointed Calara's Limited Guardian, and the public trustee was appointed to manage Calara's financial affairs. Anthony will tell you about his concerns about Calara's living conditions and her deteriorating health and the public advocate's response when he raised those concerns. In June this year, Calara's orders were revoked, and in August this year, Anthony was appointed her plenary administrator. Calara is here with us, thank you, Calara, for coming, has also recorded her thoughts and reflections, and we'll play that after Anthony's evidence. Then later today, you will hear from Alice Barta from the Aboriginal Legal Service Western Australia and Christine Grace from Kin Advocacy about their work supporting clients and some of the systemic issues arising for people with disability with respect to substitute decision-making. And then later this afternoon, you'll hear from the Western Australian Public Advocate. So we're going to travel this week around Australia. Tomorrow, we will examine Queensland. On Wednesday, we will examine Victoria. On Thursday, we will examine New South Wales. And on Friday, you'll hear from the Older Persons Advocacy Network and the NDIA. On each morning, I'll give you a brief overview of what to expect during the course of the day. So commissioners, I'm going to ask now for a content warning to be displayed. As I said, the focus of this hearing is to listen and to understand the experience of people with disability. So some of the evidence will be distressing. People will share with us some very intimate and personal information on their family, their family histories, and their evidence will at some points likely to be distressing or cause other people to be triggered by listening to stories that they may feel a very close connection to. The Royal Commission encourages everyone watching, whether by the web stream or here in person, to be mindful of the topics that may cause trigger or distress. And we encourage everyone to seek support in that respect. For the people in the hearing room here with us in Homebush, our counselling team is on hand and they are available to you at any time you wish to speak to them. Finally, commissioners, I remind everybody before we break that people following this proceeding, be it in the room or on the web stream, must be aware that there are provisions of the Royal Commission's Act that have the very clear object of protecting witnesses who give evidence before the commission. In particular, I want to draw attention to section six M of the Act, which provides that any person who uses, causes or inflicts any violence, punishment, damage, loss or disadvantage to any person on account of that person having appeared as a witness, given evidence or produced documents to the Royal Commission commits an indictable offence. Thank you, commissioners.
Now, it's appropriate to take an adjournment, I assume. Can we resume at eleven fifteen?
Yes, or if earlier, if you would prefer.
Well, let us resume then at, we'll make it eleven ten.
Eleven ten, thank you, commissioners.
We're out.
The Royal Commission is now in session.
Thank you, Chair. Just before we start with Anthony, who's our first witness for the hearing. Commissioners, there are a number of witnesses who are participating in this hearing who are using pseudonyms. And that means that you have made some orders that those people cannot be identified by name or in any other way. So can I just a reminder for anybody following the proceedings that ideally, please do not take photographs of the witnesses. If you are talking to the witnesses, then please remember to use their pseudonyms. If you are talking to the witnesses, then please remember to use their pseudonyms in any conversations or any publication in relation to the evidence that they will give. If anyone in the room or anyone online needs any information about how non-publication orders work for the Royal Commission, then please do not come and hesitate to come and talk to us or to any of the team or people following online to contact the Royal Commission.
I take it from what you've said, Miss Eastman, that people should be aware that any publication of a photograph or identifying information may be in breach of the orders that have been made by me and which can be enforced.
Yes, and I think people, Commissioners, are also sensitive in this area around guardianship and financial administration orders, that some of the relevant state laws have very strong prohibitions on the publication of some information. So our primary objective in hearing the stories is that our witnesses feel they can speak their truth and speak honestly and openly to you about their experiences. But we don't wish them to be inadvertently put in any difficulty or have any concern about their evidence. And Commissioners, you'll recall what I said in concluding my opening comments about the provisions of the Royal Commission's Act, particular section six M in relation to the protection for witnesses appearing at the hearings.
Yes, thank you, Miss Eastman.
So our first witness is Anthony. Anthony is using a pseudonym. And Commissioners, Anthony will take an affirmation.
Anthony, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence today. We appreciate your assistance to the Commission and we also appreciate the statement that you have provided to us that we have read. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate, who was just your right, she will administer the affirmation to you. Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Anthony. I will now ask Miss Eastman to ask you some questions.
And Commissioners, before I do that, I'm just going to ask if the content warning can come up onto the screen. And this will be a story of First Nations experiences. And so want to ensure that anybody hearing the evidence has access to the telephone supports available. Well, Anthony, welcome to the Royal Commission. Thank you for coming. And can I start by asking you to confirm that you've made a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yes, I have.
And you've got a copy with you?
Yes.
And it's dated the third of November this year, is that right?
Yes.
And you've had a read of the statement. I think we've sort of found one typo in the statement, is that right?
Yes.
So that typographical error is, it's really a missing word, it's in paragraph twenty. And Commissioners, that will say, during this time in 2016, I experienced a brief period of, and then the word being should be added to that sentence. So other than that, the contents of the statement are true, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Before I start asking you some questions, Commissioners, I'd like Alice Barta to have an opportunity just to announce her appearance. She's acting front.
Yes.
May please the Commissioner, Barta, from the Aboriginal Legal Service of WA, representing Anthony today.
Thank you, Miss Barta.
And I thank this Barta for assistance working with Anthony in the preparation of the statement. Thank you. All right, so Anthony, we're going to tell a story about your family and a story about the experience of First Nations people. And in particular, you wanted to share your experiences, but also to talk about your mum, Calara. And she is a stolen generation survivor, is that right?
Yes.
And Calara's in the room with us as well.
Yes, she is.
Okay. So if we sort of say the whole story and then I want to come to the detail of it, is that at the present time, as at August this year, you have been appointed Calara's administrator, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And that means that you are able to make decisions for her in relation to her financial status. And can we just, Commissioners, I guess, your microphones are on. So can I start by asking a little bit about yourself? And then we'll come to hear the way in which you've supported your mum over a number of years. So about you, you're twenty seven years old and you're an Aboriginal man from Western Australia.
Yes.
What would you like to tell us about your family? I know you've got a lot of siblings.
Um, yes, I'm one of six. Five of us kids were state ward, so we belonged to the government. That's how we looked at it up to the age of eighteen. I was taken when I was two. I was put into six group homes, eight carers and I went to eleven schools.
How would you describe your childhood?
Um, traumatic, disruption, lost and hurt.
Was it hard to learn to build emotional connections?
Absolutely. I still have it, issues now.
And in terms of connection to country and culture, when you were going to eleven schools and lived in six different homes, how were you able, if at all, to keep connection to culture and country?
Um, I didn't at first. I presumed myself as what we would call white. I changed my name. I didn't associate myself like that due to the stigmatisation around me. It was really hard. So yeah, it was very hard to find myself, my self-identity.
Did you have a lot of disruption when you were at school?
Yes, a lot. I got put into different programmes. It was hard to build friendships in school, obviously, eleven schools. They weren't like perf schools, you know, there were some perf schools, but mostly country, like in the countryside schools. So it's a little bit hard as well. And then also when people say that in schools, such as, oh, you know, where's your parents? The common question, you know, where's your mum and dad? I'll be like, I don't know. Um, so, and also the foster carers as well, like you couldn't say that were your parents because it was clearly said to you that they weren't. So it was hard.
You weren't able to finish high school, were you?
No, I was put in a programme called S S C P, Senior School Engagement Programme, where they put kids like, if they've just got out of duty or something like that. But the reason why I was put in there is because of, at the time, school reports wasn't given to the senior high school. So I had to go to a class and yeah, it was kind of a weird class, wasn't really really that educational.
Your childhood was one where you were exposed to a lot of trauma and you also experienced a lot of abuse, social and emotional, sexual and physical abuse. And you experienced family violence and you were exposed to alcohol and other drugs as you were growing up. Is that right?
Yes.
How have you been able to find your way forward, Anthony?
It's hard to say in words, I think. I think, but in regards to how I found myself is education and information provided to me. I had to get an education to find light to help me in life. So this has helped me with my family, helped me get back to culture, acceptance and self-identity.
And one of the topics that we're talking about at the Royal Commission this week is learning how to make decisions. Can you, reflecting on your childhood, think about, how did you learn to make decisions for yourself and have that sense of independence?
I didn't have that decision-making as a child, of course, being a state ward. I think it was even hard to have any power because obviously we all know children are vulnerable, even underneath the state government's laws, obviously. So how I found that power is when I got told, you know, the carer's no longer getting payments. So when you hit eighteen, that's it, you're out in the streets. And that was pretty much for me. And I had to find my own way. I had no family, no friends really to fall back on too. So it was extremely hard to get to where I am now.
Well, thank you for sharing your story, but I know you wanted to talk about your mum as well. So can we start with your mum? And I know Calara's in the room. So Calara, I hope you don't mind us talking about you a little bit, is that okay? All right, so Anthony, your mum's fifty years old. She's an Aboriginal woman. She lives with cognitive impairment and she's showing some signs of improvement in terms of her cognitive functioning, is that right?
Yes.
And as a child, she was diagnosed with epilepsy and she's lived with epilepsy since she was a young child.
Yes.
Um, you have said that your mother finds it hard to talk about her past because there's a lot of trauma in her past connected to her being a member of the Stolen Generations. What would you like to tell the Royal Commission about your mum?
My mum is definitely a strong lady. I had to find my mother when I left care. I had to build that relationship. She is so knowledgeable. And she's, she's a very loving person. And I think with my assistance in the last couple of years, I've helped her gain back some independence and there's massive improvements.
Well, can I ask you about how you connected with your mum? So I think there's a story here. You're about nineteen years old and you were driving down a road in Perth and you saw a homeless woman. Now, over to you, take up the story from there. What did you see and what happened?
Yeah, I was driving, sorry, in a perf area. And it was a very hot day. And I noticed this lady walking on the side of the street, very like lots of clothing on. And I was like, damn, you know, I'd be sweating for it. And it was very hot. And I've seen her a couple of times when I was growing up. So I kind of had a brief idea what my mother looked like visually. And I pulled over and I was like, mum. And then she's looked at me confused and I was like, said her name. And then she looked at me and I was like, I'm your older son. She's like, oh, how you going? And I'm like, yeah, good, thanks.
Did you have to sort of do a table tape? Because this is a lady.
It was, yeah. So I had to, so I was driving past.
She had a tiara on?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Wearing a pram?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You were like, what?
Yes, what happened was I was driving past. I seen her, so then I had to be like, thinking, that's my mother, haven't seen her. She did a U-turn, came back around and I was like, hey, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, she was wearing a tiara. She clearly, you know, was having some mental health issues at that moment. She was pushing a pram with some clothes in because I thought it was a baby first. And then, yeah, from there, after, you know, I said to her, you know, where, you know, where do you live, et cetera? Just having that small talk. I said to her, you know, you can come back to mine, get yourself sorted. So I popped the boot, she was a bit hesitant, jumped in the car, of course, and then chucked all of her stuff in and then went back to mine.
So i- in that sort of short moment, you're able to sort of have that connection back with your mother?
Yeah, it was.
Seen her for a long time?
It was very hard to have that connection, but I think we stood on the side of the road for about twenty minutes roughly, talking back and forth.
So you took your mum home and when she got there, she made some comments, didn't she? What did she tell you?
But she was a bit hesitant getting, sending, like coming into my home. It was a true story at home. And she was like, this house is white. And I said, well, yeah, I guess it is, but it's a roof over my head. And I said, you know, that's your room upstairs. You can go to the same place, get all your washing, do your washing. And I knew that she had a hideout as well. So I went back with her to get all the rest of her stuff.
Okay. So did she end up staying with you for long, your house?
She stayed with me for a couple of months. I had to, from full, I had to cut down my hours from full-time to part-time. I had some support carers come in and help where it was, you know, where she needed it. And then I think, yeah, then obviously she went into that medical side of it.
Okay, so you had some difficulty communicating with Calara at the time and you could tell there was something going on for her in terms of her mental health, is that right?
Yes.
And you felt she was very closed up and she didn't want to talk about that. So you went to the doctor to get some assistance for her, see if she could be signed up to the disability support pension, is that right?
Yes.
And then part of that process was that she had to be reviewed by a psychiatrist. And then she was in turn referred to the Aboriginal Mental Health Team, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, this, taking these steps in this process, did you think at the time that this process might lead to an application being made in relation to your mother having a guardian appointed?
No, not at all.
And had you at any time around getting medical help for your mum's mental health at the time thought that this might lead to a guardian being appointed for her?
No.
But some months after the interaction with the health practitioners, you received a call from a public representative of the public advocate, is that right?
Yes.
And the representative told you that there would be a hearing in a place called the State Administrative Tribunal. And the person said to you words to this effect, don't worry, all will be looked after, your mother will be cared for. So
That's correct.
Had you heard of the State Administrative Tribunal before then?
Never.
Had you heard of a public advocate?
No.
Did you understand what the conversation was about?
Not really.
Uh, do you know who made the application for your mum that there were orders? And were you consulted at all?
No.
Did anyone ask you whether, if your mum needed some assistance at that time, about what assistance she might need?
No.
Did anyone ask you if there needed to be orders, whether you would be able to step in and support your mum and take on that responsibility?
I wasn't really informed about anything.
Were you told whether you could go to the tribunal?
I don't recall that.
Do you know if your mum got any information about the tribunal?
No.
And so when you look back at this time, it was a bit of a blur and you didn't really understand what was going on, is that right?
Yes, correct.
So after the hearing, you received a phone call from a representative of the public advocate to say that things went well, all went well. And you asked if your mother knew anything about what was going on. And she said that she didn't know she was on any orders, is that right?
Yes.
Now, at that time, your knowledge of guardianship and administration was fairly limited. So you didn't understand the effect of the orders or what they might mean for your mother or for yourself, is that right?
Yes.
But you've later come to understand that at that hearing in 2015, a public advocate was appointed to be your mother's guardian with decision-making functions for accommodation, so where and with whom she lived, for services and medical treatment decisions. And there was also an order made appointing the public trustee to be your mother's administrator.
Yes, that's correct.
Anthony, sorry, can I ask just a question here?
Of course you can.
When the public advocate contacted you to let you know that this application was to be made, where was your mother living? Was she still living with you or was she somewhere else?
I think she was still living with me, of course, staying in a respite place where they had, it was like a care place, where you might drop her, like she was staying with me, but then like give me respite on the weekend kind of thing. So then she went for a couple of nights at a respite place.
Thank you.
Are you now aware that a social worker was the person who prompted the application in relation to your mother? Are you aware of that?
Absolutely not.
So when the orders were made, the next thing was that your mum was then moved into a house that you've identified in your statement, but we're not going to refer to the name. So we'll call it the facility, is that okay? So you know what I'm talking about, okay? So she moved to the facility and she lived there throughout the period late 2015 through to June this year, is that right?
Yes.
Now, this was also a really tricky time for you or hard time for you, probably a better word, is that right?
Yes.
And you experienced a brief period where you were also homeless.
Yes.
And I think you've said in your statement, you've told the Royal Commission that you had some mental health And I think you've said in your statement, you've told the Royal Commission that you had some mental health problems at that time. You'd lost your job and you're sleeping in a car.
Yeah, couch surfing, everything.
You felt very disconnected at this time, having established that connection with your mum. Living with her and then she's now living somewhere else, is that right?
Yes.
And di- did you have any say at all about where she was going to live or why, whether the facility was. Now somewhere you thought she would like to live?
No.
This period of disconnection for you um was one where you had to focus on making sure that you were okay yourself, is that right?
Absolutely.
And so you visited your mum when she was living at the facility over this period of time?
Yes.
And what can you tell the Royal Commission about the nature of those visits and what you saw?
Um, I think first I was shocked, um. The facility was locked, you had to get a code to get in. Um, I always make a joke with mum, like with a staring competition, who who won it? Cause you walk through a room with like three or four couches, there's like twenty odd people sitting there, no T V, silence, staring. Very, very overwhelming. Um. It was horrible, you know, very um horrific things I've seen there, um. Mum should say a lot of things to me. I said, you know, I can't do much, can't do much. Um, she was only an Aboriginal lady there too. And. It was just very confronting. Sometimes I don't like, mum would call me and say, hey, come see me. And I was like. I don't know, do you wanna come meet me at the front? Obviously she couldn't, she couldn't get out, it's the code. Um, there was a lot of, lot of stuff, mum, mum would call me up and says like. There's a woman sitting on my bed, cause obviously mum would be sharing a room. She had multiple support letters, uh support letters from the doctors asking for her own room. But they were not really followed through. But um it was quite horrific with mum stressing the things to me as well.
And Anthony, that caused you a lot of stress as well, didn't it?
Absolutely, add on to my mental health.
Over the time your mum uh was at the facility, you started to observe that her wellbeing. Was declining and you thought it was declining significantly, is that right?
Yes, she didn't wanna talk anymore.
What about just dealing with daily activities such as getting dressed or just any sort of self-care? Did you notice anything about her?
Yes, she um, Cara's like, I remember one time, Cara's like, oh, I just shout her or. Mum be like, I need to wait for the Cara to come shout me. I'm like, what? You can shout yourself. And then like. Um, dressing, cleaning her room, like making her bed, these things my mother could have done by herself when I, when she was staying with me.
Describe her as a potato.
She is, like in regards to what happened. It was, she was, I would sit there. Have a communicate, like trying to have a yarn with my mum, you know, talk to my mum. And she could not respond. She would sit there and stare at me. And it was so overwhelming.
By early twenty twenty, you perceived your mum to be in a catatonic-like state when you visited her. And just that sense of staring blankly and seeing that her personal hygiene and wellbeing. Had really almost, you know, gone to pieces, is that right?
Yes.
Other family members said they couldn't visit your mum anymore because it was too traumatic to see her in this way.
Yes.
And you had a sense that maybe your mum had been medicated? And you were worried whether or not the reason for her presentation was maybe she had been. Receiving some medication, but you didn't know, did you?
Didn't know at the time.
Were you able to get any information about your mum's medical treatment at that time?
No.
Uh, you have later learnt that um your mum. Medical decisions were made by the guardian and that she had been prescribed and was taking monthly antipsychotic injections. From about twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, is that right?
Yeah, I had to source that myself.
How did you find out that information?
So um when I became a health professional after my studies, I um. Knew of the drugs, of course, um that was prescribed. So when I did become the medical guardian at that, like at a date, um. I automatically already knew what medication, I'm like, that doesn't fit my mother. And then I did backtracking, seeing where it was prescribed, spoke to the team. They, it was all kind of like past, past kind of the blame. Um, and there was no one. There was never, I'm sorry or sorry for this.
You uh had some occasions where you were able to communicate with your mum. And what did she tell you about whether she felt safe and what was happening to her?
She would say that um, like in, like, sorry, in regards to the medical.
Medical and just generally what it was like living at the facility?
Well, she's definitely told me every single time I've seen her, I'm scared. I hate it here. She felt worthless, hopeless, the whole lot. She had no purpose in, in, in life, by the looks of it. She had no future set up. She had um, medical-wise, she couldn't even respond. Um, you know, literacy and numeracy isn't mum's best. But she would know if there's something wrong and she tried to express it. And that's how she expressed it to me is that, I don't like living here. I'm getting abused, et cetera.
Did you feel you could do anything at the time?
No.
And earlier this year, you remember receiving a phone call from one of the workers at the facility who told you there'd been a medication error? And um you were told that your mother had been given a double dose of some medication to assist her with the epilepsy. By this stage, you had done some studies in the medical field. And so I think as you said earlier. You, you knew what these drugs were and how they worked. So I think, as you say in the statement, you accept sometimes medication errors can occur.
Hmm.
But you were very unsettled about uh what had happened to your mum. And that really sort of prompted you to say, I've got to do something more here, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And so um over this time, you'd started to teach yourself a little bit about what guardianship was. And how it worked and um the nature of the way which the guardians had to discharge their obligations, is that right?
Yeah, I think through my studies as well, it helped me.
And do you, do you know whether the person who was appointed to be your mum's guardian? Was involved in any of her day-to-day care at all?
No.
The person uh who we've called in the statement O P A R one. Did O P A R one visit the facility? Do you, do you know anything about that?
No.
And did you have any contact yourself with O P A R one?
Hardly.
If you did have contact, what was the sort of nature or the purpose of that contact?
It'd be um me, like myself, trying to phone, which obviously there would be no answers as much. Um, emails, when I became the medical guardian, would communicate through emails and that's when he would respond. It was quite hard, uh this um, this person was hard to get hold of. Um, including other services that would support my mother would be contacting me, asking for consent. And I'd be like, I'm sorry, I can't, they're like, well. The renewal is coming up, we need someone to sign up, mum, you know, your mother won't get the support. And I'm like, well, I'm not legally able to, you need to go to this person. And then, um, so there was, it was really hard. And he, this person was rude, absolutely rude.
And then, uh there were some times where your mum was able to stay with you, and this is sort of around. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that she could come and spend the weekend or some nights with you, is that right?
Yes.
And on one of those occasions, you had a chance to talk about the option of your mum coming to live with you again. Do you remember that?
Um, yes.
And did this discussion then prompt you? And your mother contacting O P A R one to ask about your mum coming to come and live with you? Do you remember that?
Yes, I think my mother called first and then I tried to call.
And uh do you remember whether O P A R one was agreeable to your mum changing? Where she was living in the facility to come and live with you?
No.
Sorry, do, do you mean, no, I don't?
No, um, this person did, was not agreeing at all. He said, this person said some comments along the line, which was quite hurtful.
Is that that your son couldn't look after you before, so how's he gonna look after you now?
Yeah, and he couldn't look after you back then.
And that's what you remember your mum telling you about the conversation, is that right? You thought that this was uh referring to a time where you were homeless in twenty sixteen?
Correct.
And you were concerned that that didn't take into account all of the work that you've been doing since that time in terms of your education? And your very stable housing and accommodation, is that right? You um tell the Royal Commission that you felt.
Get a detail, who did the conversation happen between in terms of requesting? The transfer, was it uh the lady herself that was under guardianship or was it Anthony?
It's right, isn't it, that Calara was in contact with O P A R one? And Calara asked O P A R one if she could come and stay with you at your place? Is that, that was the first step, right? But you had also had contact with O P A R one at different points in time to raise concerns, is that right?
Correct.
So um if we then move to um. Some reviews in relation to your mother's guardianship arrangements, can I ask you some questions about when reviews came up from time to time?
Um, like in regards to her orders being reviewed, sorry.
So there were periodic reviews.
Yeah, oh, I know that she was on like five-year orders and I know that um. At that time when I, after I had my education, whatever, it was, I was, I knew that you could like request a review. Any times after also seeking legal advice, which I did, um, which did help us get that review.
Okay, so there was one review in about July twenty twenty? And did you attend that review of your mum's guardianship and administration orders?
Yes, over the phone.
Was it like a telephone hearing? And you um asked about whether you could take over your mother's medical treatment decisions? And to be able to make decisions for your mum in relation to medical treatment, is that right?
Yes.
And you did so because you felt as a qualified health practitioner that you had the knowledge to be able to. Support your mum in those types of decisions, is that right?
Yes.
Do you remember if your mum also participated in that telephone hearing?
Yes, she did.
What do you remember about her participation in that, that review hearing?
She had the telephone call at the facility and she was with the support staff. At who was working at the facility, who was having issues with. So it was kind of a little bit intimidating for her, but.
And, and what ended up happening as a result of that hearing? Were there orders appointing you or were there any changes made?
Um, orders appointed me as medical guardian, that was the only change.
But not uh more broadly in terms of where your mum would live or any services that she might need. Support with, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
So in terms of then you taking on this responsibility in relation to medical treatment decision-making. How did you decide you were going to support your mum in relation to her medical treatment?
Um, I first took mum to a cultural appropriate medical service, an Aboriginal medical service. Um, where I was working at the time as a health practitioner, um. We, we had a review and I first noticed the signs of when I looked at my, my mother's blood results. I seen a high increase of a certain type. Um, and other, other concerning health um issues there that weren't addressed. Um, these also blood results shown over years of um period of absent of the treatment. Um, so that's where I just, yeah, I spoke to the medical team, we got straight on to it. And yeah, I'm so glad that she's healthy.
So you were concerned about some physical signs of untreated diabetes?
Yes, correct.
Concerned about the condition of her body, particularly her feet?
That's, yes, sorry, that's what I meant about the blood results. I checked the blood results and that's how we can tell diabetes is in someone.
And you were concerned about her eyesight?
Yes, it was blurry.
And um and I know this is a sensitive thing to talk about uh from a cultural perspective, but. It was clear that she was struggling in managing her menstrual, menstrual health and hygiene.
Correct, it was, every time I'd see my mother at that facility, that's when I noticed there was massive signs of neglect. A little bit.
Her teeth were all black?
Yes, she's had to have all of, I was sitting there over the dental um chair to support my mum, you know, my mother emotionally. She's had one occasion, eighteen removed one day, the next day, healing, seventeen. She's got dentures now.
You also uh over time uh became aware that your mother had hepatitis C infection that had not been treated. And that this had led to moderate cirrhosis of her liver.
Correct.
And um you considered that there needed to be a change in her medication regime. To wean her off the antipsychotic medication. And start to give her a new direction in terms of how she might be managed with respect to medication, is that right?
Correct, I had to speak to, um, it was a mental health facility first, the original prescriber. They had her on their books for about three months. Um, so it was managed by a local doctor then, who I've never met, who'd come to the facility, in the facility to see my mother. Over a certain period of months. It was, as my understanding, only a specific doctor can prescribe it and seize it. Or reduce the medication. So this doctor unfortunately couldn't seize the medication, but just continuing prescribing it. Um, that's when at the, the doctor where I was, sorry, that Aboriginal medical service where I was working at, one of the doctors. Uh, did a, what's it called, a referral for a psych review, uh where we could finally get that medication um. From injections monthly to tablet forms daily and then wean off that way.
And uh your mum now has glasses with prescription lenses and basic things like. Uh, being fitted with the dentures and having glasses, those are, might be seen for some people to be in the ordinary course. But they've made a really big difference for Clara, haven't they?
She can smile.
Um, so you've noticed that in terms of the changes for Calara, that as her health improved. Her um ability to think through problems and make decisions for herself has also improved?
Yes.
And uh how have you uh supported her in the health decisions that you've made? And supporting her as she's improved in terms of thinking about things and addressing problems?
Um, I'd always give mum options, I'd always empower my mother. I'd always get mum to speak to the um Aboriginal staff members at the um health facility. At the A- um Aboriginal Medical Service, sorry, to yarn with my mother. Not me being in the room, because you know, woman's business is woman's business, men shouldn't be in there. So my mum was able to talk openly to the female staff. I e- expressed her, um, you know, her concerns or anything regarding her health. Um, then, yeah, I would always empower my mum to speak. If she ever needed like someone to speak for her, then I was able to speak.
Did you um take the step of making any formal complaints about the um. Your mother's medical treatment when she lived at the facility?
Yes, so first I went to the doctor, the one that would go and visit my mother in the facility. I tried to get hold of him, he was hard to get hold of um from the medical facility that he worked at. Um, he finally responded and said that um over, uh over the phone, sorry, um. It's hard to manage diabetes and the health conditions in a facility like that. You've got to look at dietary requirements, et cetera. And I'm like. You'd look, you're making my mother gonna lose her toes and fingers. I wanted to actually swear at him. And then he was, if you're going to question me or something, he said, I'm going to hang up the phone. And then when he finished talking to me, cause he didn't know my background and health, then I went and spoke to the guardian.
And what um did you do? I think you've provided for the Royal Commission some correspondence in relation to. A complaint and a response that you received from the guardianship team at the public advocate's office, is that right?
Yes.
And i- is that complaint being resolved?
It was resolved, not really one that I would say good. Wasn't, I'm sorry. It was resolved, not really one that I would say good, wasn't, I'm sorry.
Could I just clarify, when you made complaints and you were talking to the doctor, were you your mother's guardian at that time?
Medical guardian at the time, that's how I found out all the those things.
So when you were asking about that and you made the complaint and you had a discussion with the guardian, you were actually by that stage
The medical guardian at the time.
One other aspect in terms of uh what was occurring for Calara in that period twenty fifteen up to twenty twenty two was when she lived in the facility, I think you mentioned earlier, she was the only Aboriginal woman at the facility. In terms of what you observed about Calara's connection to her cultural identity and her cultural life, what can you tell us about the impact of living in the facility on her cultural life?
Massive, massive, um she missed out on lots. We've missed out on lots, us kids, from it. Um we didn't know who to speak to, extended family, because our family um structure's a little bit different than non-Arbanish people, so it was quite hard, family members thought we got lost or we died as a response. We still can't connect to family due to the disruption, um. Yeah, it was, there was no cultural practice, no cultural safety in the facility. It was, it's a very dated facility, it looks like you would see back in the fifties or sixties, like it was very dated. Um the only new thing was the lock on the door, lock on the um gate. That's what I've seen as the the latest newest thing.
Hmm. Now bring you to this year and in particular from about the middle of this year in June. Um by June this year, O P A R one, so the guardian who had the responsibility in relation to where Calara lived moved Calara to a shared independent living facility run by a particular service provider.
Same.
Oh, same provider?
Same provider.
Your mum told you that she was happier living at the seal facility, but it was run by the same organisation, so it's still that connection of the just, she felt distressed, is that right?
She felt, uh sorry, um okay, sorry, um yeah, sorry, um she felt safe, more safe because of the situation at the end when she was staying there. She had horrific abuse and where police was involved. And for her to go to a s- a place where there was all women's home, no men, because the facility where she was staying in for those years was male and female, so going to that seal provider, she felt more safe. And had her own room this time.
Okay, so she was, she had her own room before she was sharing. Uh she was living in a place where she felt safer, is that right?
Correct.
And then shortly after she moved into this new place, um you and Calara went to the S A T again, and this was to make an application to review the guardianship orders again, is that right?
Correct.
And what happened uh on this time going to the S A T?
I think, um, we had to get legal, well, I got legal advice, absolutely. Um because the S A T is not my strong suit, obviously, so having more people to back you up and a cultural appropriate service like, you know, A L S, um to help us and express our voice and, you know, our concerns was good, um but however, I felt like from the change of the facility to the to the support individual living was right at the end of that um guardian's um guardianship order thing.
Mm hmm.
So we've been asking extensively throughout a while, I know a year or two, two, maybe about two years to get mum out of that facility, and it's just happened when there's about to be a review, when we've done an application.
So when you went in June, the S A T, the tribunal, reviewed the guardianship orders and on that time it revoked the order, so it stopped the orders. Then you and Clara had to go again to the tribunal in August this year and it was to review the administration orders.
Yes.
For that, okay, and at that hearing, the S A T decided to appoint you as Clara's plenary administrator, so what's your understanding of what that means for you? You've had the medical, where are we now with you on the plenary?
I just look after mum's finances side of things, so um I support mum by giving her her own bank card, even prior before that. Um when she was under the public trustee, public trustee gave me a bank card where they, because I said to the public trustee, giving my mother five dollars on a Tuesday, five dollars on a Thursday, throughout those years, it's ridiculous. Um so I empowered my mother prior before being at um being her and her administrator, um by letting her like use her own bank card, but till this day, I've let her use her own bank card. Like obviously I tell mum, you know, you gotta pay for bills, have savings, I said, I go by the rule, it's, you know, more money coming in than going out. So um yeah, and I said to mum, yeah, we can, you know, you can get your own place later on down the track when you're doing on the right direction to get there.
And also in August this year, Clara moved in to live with you again, is that right?
Correct, after I found out the fees.
At the other place?
Supported individual living that I thought N D I S might be able to cover.
So she's living with you now, but I think both you and Clara have talked about the importance of Clara being able to live independently as well, is that right? So tell us what arrangements are currently being made to find some housing for Clara.
Sure, so I charged my mother two hundred bucks a fortnight instead of nearly a grand a fortnight. Um so I said to mum that what we'll do is put you on a priority housing list when you get support documents from people such as doctors, et cetera. However, the waitlist, you know, with the Department of Housing unfortunately is a bit long. What we can do is get a private rental for you, such as maybe a place um for over fifties, because obviously now she's that age. She can um be able to do that. However, I was looking at, we've been to a few hi- um house viewings. Um so we've been trying to put applications in, however, that not been successful due to, you know, the rental market at the moment's quite hard. But however, mum's got her own room at my house and I'm not gonna kick my mother out.
Okay, so you're, so you've still got this role in making decisions for Clara in relation to financial matters. But in the rest of Clara's life, in terms of where she goes and decisions around medical treatment and just the day-to-day life stuff, what is she, you know, what is she doing there?
She um she's great, she knows when she needs to go to the doctors, she makes her own appointments, she has those informal supports around her such as support um coordination from N D I S and whatnot. Um and if she ever has like something issues like health-wise, she might lean on to me and what does this mean? I'll be like, you know, this is what that means. So, yeah, she can make those own decisions.
One of the uh topics for the commission to listen to this week is to get some really good, concrete, real-life examples about supportive decision-making. How do you practise supportive decision-making in living with Clara?
I always ask my mother, what would you like? What would be, I always say, mum, like mum, I say the biggest thing I do in life is reflection. What what's happened in the past, how can you improve in the future? I said, now, if you want to, say, go to the dentist, you get to go go a couple of times, you know, um a year, especially when you've got the dentures now, you know, those regular eye checks, you know, um per dietary, those medical side of things. But mum, she knows where she wants to live, she knows who she wants to speak to, and she's got all the control, and I'm just there to be as a support factor if she feels that way, like in regards to where she might need support. And she'll express that to me, um but I, like, I don't question, our relationship's great, there's no negative. And yeah, I respect my mother.
Well, pick you up on um your tool of reflection on the past and what have we learned? Can I ask you about reflecting on this period of time from seeing Clara walking along the road to then uh moving in with you and then the period where someone else was making decisions for her and where she was living? You have shared some of these reflections in your statement, and so if it helps you, I'm up to about paragraph sixty-two. And you wanted to talk to the commissioners, particularly around the practices and decision-making for a person who's First Nations and some of the uh areas where you felt some of the practices felt culturally unsafe, what would you like to tell the Royal Commissioners about that?
There was no Aboriginal workers or staff members at all when my mother was under guardianship. Um until I became her medical guardian, and that's what linked her into a cultural safe um health service. There was no A L Os um at the public advocate talking to myself or my mother. My mother, there was no cultural practices at all as well, it's so important, cultural yarning. She goes to cultural yarning groups now weekly, fortnightly sometimes. And there was limited attempts to make um make, uh sorry, limited attempts made to contact family, absolutely. I wasn't even spoken to, it was hard to get hold of, um the guardian, even services, like I've mentioned before would come to me and asking me consent when I was medical guardian, and I said no. They're like, well, we need this review, her funding's gonna be stopped, we can't provide that um support during the daytime. And I'm like, well, I can't, I can send an email, but they've already done it. So there was that barrier of communication.
What do you think um could change in terms of supporting people who uh are First Nations people in their experience of of having guardianship or having to experience a tribunal making orders about them?
Massive, there is massive, um there is a long list of improvements, someone that's Aboriginal, absolutely. Try to contact the person's family. Speak to them face to face instead of over the phone. My mother never met the guardian, she's never met him. I've ne- I've ne- she's, she's, I said to her, you know what he looks like? He controls your life. And she's like, no, I don't. How culturally insensitive is that? And then also not linking her up to cultural appropriate services such as a health service um community services, there's mass, and there's an a a list of Aboriginal services, health and non in W A that can provide the support um where she can actually have a voice and speak up for her needs.
I just jump in there because the public advocate might say that its powers under the law in Western Australia are about making decisions and not doing sort of case, not being a case manager or managing the services per se, that that should be the facility or other places. Even a- assuming that's correct and it's not the role of the public advocate to case manage, do you still think there can be some improvement in the communication around that for people generally, but specifically for First Nations people?
Yes, um my understanding, sorry, Kate, it was that my mother's guardian had control of the services she would be engaging in, so that's what I know of. So if that guardian wanted to be culturally safe, I'd I guess exploring the options of cultural appropriate services would be amazing, but it didn't happen.
Okay, we've covered a lot and um we're very grateful for the statement that you provided to the commissioners. Is there anything else you wanted to tell the commissioners just before we conclude about improvements that you'd like to see or coming back to your approach, any reflections?
Yeah, I love that word reflection, um I think there is lots of improvements that I could say and I have listed them in my statement, but I could say a couple such as if there's an Aboriginal person subject to guardianship orders, at least speaking to an Aboriginal liaison officer or hiring one if they don't have none, or even speaking to an Aboriginal service within the community. Because you you know, people that aren't Aboriginal, I understand they might have their cultural awareness training, et cetera, et cetera. But actually not understanding family dynamics, family struggles, the barriers, the contributing factors that people suffer is quite important to know. So if you wanna look after Aboriginal people, start actually communicating to Aboriginal services and people and the culture, more, you know, more better, because yeah, there is a list and that's what I can say is just speak to an Aboriginal person, don't try to assume what people think.
Thank you, Anthony. The commissioners might have some questions for you.
Anthony, if it's all right with you, I'll ask my colleagues first if they have any questions, starting with Commissioner McKeown.
Thank you, Chair, uh thank you, Anthony. I I'm grateful to you and your mum for sharing your experience with us. I have a a couple of questions. The first one is, when your mum was in the facility for about seven years, uh what support, if any, did she receive to develop her ability to make her own decisions? Do you know if she received any information or any uh support or any resources to develop that?
Not that I'm aware of, um I know that maybe after the fourth year when she was still under, so um what's it called, been four four years under the guardianship order, I think around about then is when I started to see, oh no, what I heard from mum, this mum would told me that oh, you know, I had a lady come visit me, and I'm like, what lady? Because I was the only person that was gonna go see her in that facility. So it was interesting to know, now we finally got services such as someone to take her out of the facility for two, three hours, go do, sit and have a coffee. And that's where I've asked for more money from the pub, uh from the administrator at the time to pay for those things because she was only getting five and ten, oh sorry, five dollars on Tuesdays, five dollars on Thursdays. That does not include personal hygiene products, clothing as well, and woman's business.
Thank you. My other question is about now, you've said that paragraph uh sixty-one of your statement that your mum now gets support to go out into the community, a support worker three times a week. Uh how how important is that support?
Right, it's um, my mum, she would go out with her support workers um three times a week. Um not not the same support worker, I think they're from different organisations. Um they would uh what's called take mum to the shops to do her own shopping. Um she wants to go have a coffee, have a yarn with one of them, or even take her to uh her medical appointments, because mum can't drive. So they'll assist her with those things.
Thank you.
Commissioner, right. Thank you, um Anthony, I was just gonna ask, and I I'm looking for um assistance from s- um council assisting of this. We're referring to a place called a facility, which I presume we don't wish to name.
That's correct.
But may I at least ask the nature of this facility, for example, was it an aged care or was it a disa- a a large residential centre for people with disability or something? Is that permissible for us to know?
Yes, that is permissible for you to know, we just won't mention its name.
Yeah.
It would help me make more sense of the story.
So my knowledge of the facility, after experiencing it, I like in regards to going to see my mother, half of it is aged care and that's on the other side where it's all the pretty flowers. And on the other side is like a construction site at that time, which is a hostel environment. It's, I would say, majority of the residents staying there are mental health-related.
Okay, um did it have resident, did it have nurses residing or or providing assistance?
The ratio was um really bad, they had um not nurses, um support workers. Um I questioned as well, as an uh obviously as a health professional, um about the medication side of things. Is that are your staff med comp? Have they done appropriate practices and et cetera to administer the medication? Um especially when it comes down to the injections. Um it was one support worker to like forty residents that was staying there in the hostel. There was a nurse, however, that person was in the aged care side of things. Really comes over to the um hostel, I wouldn't even wanna walk in there, so I wouldn't wouldn't blame that nurse.
So did the residential, did the residents look appealing and professional when you saw it?
No, they were very rude. Um, I think they, they caught on my background. Um, they were quite dismissive. I've seen them speak to my mother when I walked in the facility. They didn't realise I was standing there. They were like, go away, go away. Or um, she were with the hand movements. So um, and they were speaking to the other residents. Like, I wouldn't, I don't know if they even, I wouldn't even speak that to a child. It was quite bad.
Just so I'm clear, was it the public guardian that made the decision for your mum to live there?
Yes.
Did she indicate any interest in living there before she went there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you have any idea how, did she know about that facility before it was chosen for her?
I think she might have been verbally told, however, not shown the facility.
And do you think anybody from the public guardian visited that place to discuss her care with her staff before a decision was made for her to go there?
No.
Didn't think so. Um, did um, when you had a further meeting there to review Kalaras arrangements where the decision was made for you to be uh the medical guardian, did your mum in that meeting express any indication that she'd like to leave the facility during that meeting?
She couldn't because there was a support worker there at the facility supporting her on the phone that we felt massive conflict of interest, massive um intimidation. My mother spoke to me after, I seen her straight after, after work, because I was, it was during work hours, so I had a bit of time to speak to her. Oh, sorry, over the um hearing, over the phone call. Um, massive intimidation. Be prior, prior before that um hearing over the phone, months and months before she was saying that she wanted to move.
Um, had your mum indicated to the public guardian or to you that she wanted to move before this review had occurred?
Yes.
Were you able to discuss that with the guardian in the meeting?
No, because I didn't, I wasn't really informed on what to speak.
So was the only thing discussed in the review the status of your capacity to make medical decisions, in other words, was it a full review of everything that or, or just a discussion about?
I think it was a full review because they went for five, because I think it's the max is five years that they can put someone under. So when mum's five years was coming up, they said, well, we're going for another five years for a review.
Okay. How long did the meeting last?
Uh, a few minutes. It was quick, quick conversation, I think. I felt like it was a conversation.
When you say a few minutes, are you talking?
Like, I'm thinking maybe about fifteen probably, or something. I, it was quite, quite short.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Um, I'd just like to clarify some of the chronology if I can. In two thousand and fifteen, the original orders were made by the Administrative Tribunal, and that involved the public advocate being a limited guardian with power to make decisions for accommodation. That's one aspect of it. Is that right as far as you know?
Yes. And I think, is it who, who they listen as well or who they speak to? I think so, is it?
No, I'm just talking about the original orders that gave the public.
In two thousand and fifteen?
Gets two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
And then at the same time, the orders were made for the public trustee to be your mother's administrator. That's what you're saying, paragraph eighteen of your statement.
Yeah.
Now, when did you become aware of those orders?
I think it was over a phone call, maybe a week after.
Right, so it was, it was in two thousand and fifteen?
Yes, and I had it over phone, over the phone call from the same gentleman that spoke to me.
Okay. Now, at that time, that's before the NDIS, before your mother's got anything from the NDIS. What support, financial support did your mother have at that stage in two thousand and fifteen?
My mother was on the disability support pension, because originally she wasn't when I first seen her on the side of the road.
Right.
And then I obviously got her on the disability support pension. That was the only financial support she was getting.
And did that, you may not know this, but was that support pension in part paid to either the public advocate or to the public trustee?
I was not informed of any fees or anything associated.
And you don't know what the financial arrangements were for the accommodation that your mother was in at that time?
No.
Oh, okay. In two thousand and twenty, at that stage, you've got legal advice and you become appointed in July two thousand and twenty to be a limited guardian with responsibility for medical decisions in effect for your mother.
Correct.
Right. Um, was there some reason you didn't seek also to be appointed as guardian for accommodation purposes?
I just want to clarify, I didn't get legal advice before twenty twenty. It was only after. So what things I've learned was through my studies um was regarding that, you know, if any member could jump in just to do that. I didn't know in regards to if, if I was given the chance, I would have been mum's full guardian, absolutely, but I did not get.
Okay, so, so you actually made this application yourself?
Yes. Uh, it was, um, no, it was come up for review. It was for twenty twenty.
Yeah, all right. Um, in the meantime, your mother becomes a participant in the NDIS.
Yes.
Who organised that?
I, it would be the service, um, sorry, it would be the guardian at the time.
Right. And were you consulted about the application to the NDIS for your mother to become a participant?
No.
Okay. You uh indicate in your statement that you made a complaint about the health services that were provided or not provided to your mother. And you've set out in your statement the response from the public advocate. Do you remember that?
Yes.
It, it's in, it's, we have the actual document, but uh I think the extract appears in your statement at paragraph fifty three. When I read that statement, that response, it seems to suggest that the role of the guardian is to determine decisions, but it was the doctors who were responsible for looking after your mother. That's what it says in the, in the, actually the third paragraph of the letter. My question is whether your complaint related to the whole of the period from two thousand and fifteen through to the date of the complaint, which appears to be two thousand and twenty two.
I think my complaint was, um, I did a complaint is when I obviously became the medical guardian. That's when I seen the um negligence of my mother's health.
That's two thousand and twenty?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, prior before that, no, because I didn't, I couldn't have access to my mother's medical records. Um, and obviously the facility's not going to talk to me. I'm not the guardian.
Right. When you got this response from the public advocate uh that uh says that it's essentially, as I read it, it's the responsibility of the doctors, not the responsibility of the garden. Guardian, did you make any further response to the public advocate in the light of that comment?
I said to the guardian, I said, you actually spoke to my mother? Have you actually spoke to the person that you're representing, that you're so called protecting? Um. I said to that guardian, I said, it seems like we're all playing the blame game. You don't want to take responsibility and accountability for what your actions were in, in this um incident. Um, there was not, and yeah, he, the person said to me, I got whatever the medical professionals say. As a medical professional myself, we all know that, you know, you can question things. You don't have to accept what doctors say and health, other health professionals. Of yes, you, you know, you take on an advice, obviously. But this medical professional that I questioned over the phone after trying to get contact with, you know, he didn't, he didn't like me questioning, because obviously didn't know my background, but I'm glad I questioned those things.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, now I'll just check whether there's any legal representative that, that uh may request an opportunity to ask questions of Anthony.
Um, Chair, no one's um spoken to me about that.
In the absence of somebody leaking up either physically or metaphorically, we'll assume there are no questions. In that case, Anthony, thank you very much for your evidence. Thank you very much for sharing your experiences and that of your mother. Uh, we very much appreciate your willingness to do that and to give us the benefit of what you've learned and what you've done for your mother. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Could I tender into evidence for this public hearing, Anthony's statement? And accompanying Anthony's statement will be a copy of the State Administrative Tribunal orders dated twenty eight July twenty twenty.
Yeah.
A letter from the Manager Guardianship Team Office of the Public Advocate dated eight March twenty twenty two. And further uh State Administrative Tribunal orders from the fourteenth of June and the fifteenth of August. Could you receive that material together and mark those uh documents and the statement exhibit thirty point zero zero one through to thirty point zero zero five?
Yes, those documents can be admitted into evidence and given those markings. Uh, Ms. Eastman, we have the orders made by the uh Administrative Tribunal. There are no reasons I take it for those orders.
Uh, not that we have access to, and this will be a topic that we might explore further in evidence about um when and in what circumstances written reasons provided.
And further to the question that I asked Anthony, we have the response from the guardian, but we don't have Anthony's letter of complaint. I'm not sure whether that's available.
Um, we, I think we may have that.
Well, perhaps some consideration in due course might be given to whether that should be added to the tender.
Thank you, Chair. We'll follow that up. I think there's an email of complaints.
All right, thank you. Uh, do we now adjourn or do we proceed to a pre-record?
Um, I'd like to share with you Kalaras pre-record evidence. It's just over seven minutes.
Thank you.
And it was uh an interview that Kalarah did with one of the lawyers assisting her. And they recorded that um video on the twenty fourth of October. And when you watch that, I'll ask you to receive the video and the transcript of the recording into evidence.
All right, just before we start, Anthony, you're welcome to stay there or you can go back perhaps next to your mother if there's a spare chair there.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Kalara.
Hello.
We are recording your story for the Disability Royal Commission.
Okay.
Thank you for telling your story.
You're welcome.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, what's important to you in life?
My family.
You live with your family now, don't you?
Yes.
So who are you living with?
Me.
And are they your, your children?
Yes, they are.
For a while, were you living somewhere else? How was it when you were living?
It was not nice.
When you lived there, who made decisions for you?
Uh, they did.
And did you get to talk to them about decisions?
Uh, they, they, uh, they, 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 I, I I was confused because they didn't um explain themselves. And I did say the, I was, I says, what, what I had to say.
Who was making decisions for you when you lived? Who was making choices about where you lived and who, how you got help and care?
Um. Well, it's a hard question. Um, my, um, my my, uh, my, uh. So.
Is it like a, is it an advocate?
Advocate, yeah.
Are they, were they the people at the Office of, Office of the Public Advocate?
Yes.
Is that a person's name or like an organisation?
Organisation.
Oh, and did they talk to you very much?
No, I've never seen.
Did they talk too much on the phone?
No, I've never spoke, I've spoken. And he was kind of rude to me. Um.
So he made decisions about your, like, medicine and your medical stuff and weight?
Yes.
And you didn't talk to him much?
No, I've never spoken, I've spoken to him, but that was only for, there was somebody else. For my other comments, other things, but I can't remember which one, which is which.
Do you, do you feel like you had a good relationship ever with someone else that was making, you know?
No.
Did they, did they know what you liked and needed and what you wanted in your life?
No.
How did it feel trying to have a conversation with them?
They are.
Did they know what was important for you in your life?
No.
Were you able to leave? Somewhere?
No.
Why did you want to move out?
Because I want to live with my son and get a better life.
How did you end up leaving?
My son picked me up, uh, and he might help me move to his house.
What do you remember about what he did to help you leave?
He he did, he come and see me every day. He was there for me and, um, yeah.
When did you and decide that you'd like to actually get out and, and get better healthcare?
Healthcare? Was it healthcare?
Yeah, healthcare. Was that part of your decision to move out, get better healthcare?
Yes.
What was your healthcare like when you were?
Pretty poor.
Can you tell us a bit more about that?
I, I was very depressed. And I was, I was um depressed and this, there was some, I was depressed with one lady. She didn't do things that, you know, I was annoyed with. And the, the thing was, the, that place was very poor.
And if you brought that up, if you brought it up that you weren't happy about things in your home where you lived, what what would happen?
They, they won't listen to me.
Did you get medicine and medical support?
Um, yes.
How was that medical support you had there?
It was, I understood the, the only medical, the thing I had is my tablets for my fits and that.
Do you feel that you got to have a say in your healthcare?
No.
And did you want to have a say in your healthcare?
Yes.
How has helped you around your healthcare and medical things?
He's been there for me. He's supported me. He's, um, we, we, we are like a team. And, yeah.
And how did your life change when started to support you?
Uh, come with me when I was, uh, we went to the meetings. The, um, we did win for my trustee, he's, sorry, my trustee.
Yeah.
For my trustee.
Okay.
Yep. And it wasn't very nice. He didn't listen to me where I live in. He didn't, he never answered his phone. Yep.
Yeah. Did you feel hopeful about your future when, when you were living?
I felt like I never had a future.
What are you looking forward to next in your life?
Looking for a house.
Who are you going to live with in your new home?
With, uh, with, with my son. With, uh, with, with myself.
And who's supporting you while you look for a new home? How do you think it's going to be living in your own house?
Oh, it's gonna look good.
And you're looking forward to having your own home?
Yes. My goal is to get a home-dressed house, to get a dog, and to get a job. That's my goal.
You're sharing your story with the Disability Royal Commission. What would you, what do you hope comes out of you sharing the story?
I hope it changes so much lives down the long run and I hope no one goes for it like I did.
Commissioners, thank you very much and thank you, Calara, for coming to the hearing room and for sharing that story. We know it's a very hard thing to talk about very personal stories and stories about family and stories about yourself. So we thank you for sharing your story with the Royal Commission and working with your lawyers to do that recording for us. So thank you, Commissioners. So I've attended the Calara's video recording and we also have a transcript. If you could mark that exhibit thirty point zero zero six and thirty point zero zero seven.
Yes, those two documents or items will be admitted into evidence, given the exhibit numbers to which Ms Eastman has referred.
And Commissioners are making good time, but it may be appropriate to adjourn for lunch now and I'm in your hands as to how long we'd like for lunch.
Well, if we, if we take an hour and we resume at, let us say, one forty-five, would that be convenient? All right. Anthony and Calara, thank you very much again to both of you, Anthony for giving evidence, Calara for letting us see your talk, which we've just seen on the screen. Thank you very much. From now on, adjourn until one forty-five.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Ms Eastman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. So our next witnesses, you'll see, are in the hearing room with us and we have a panel. And I'm very happy to welcome Alice Barta and Christine Grace. And I think they're both going to take an oath.
Ms Barta, Ms Grace, thank you very much for coming to the Commission and to give evidence in a panel. Small panel, but a panel nonetheless. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of my associate who's just to your right, she will administer the oath to you. Thank you very much.
I will read you both the oath. At the end, please both say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll now ask Ms Eastman to ask you some questions.
Um, Commissioners, the witnesses have each provided a statement. I'll start with Ms Barta. That's okay. So you are Alice Barta.
Yes, that's correct.
And you're representing the Aboriginal Legal Service of Western Australia?
Yes.
You've prepared a statement dated the seventeenth of November this year?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or amendments to the statement?
No.
And are its contents true and correct?
Yes.
I might start with you on introducing you and the Commissioners having a sense of the work that you do and your contribution to this hearing. Before I do that, I think you wanted to say something in opening in relation to this morning and also just acknowledging.
Yes, thank you. Before I'd start, before I start, I'd like to pay my respects to the One Goal People, the traditional custodians of the land we meet today. I pay deep respect to their elders, past and present. I'd also like to pay my deep respects to Anthony and Calara. I'd like to acknowledge their strength and resilience, as well as the strength and resilience of all my clients and colleagues at the Aboriginal Legal Service of WA. I'd like to acknowledge that I'm a Wadulla person or a non-Aboriginal person. And I'm not here to speak for my clients, but I hope to bring my clients' very important stories to the Royal Commission and highlight some of the systemic issues.
Thank you, Ms Barta. So you have been the managing lawyer of the Civil Law and Human Rights Unit of the A, I'm going to probably mix the words up, so I'm just going to say Aboriginal Legal Service. Is that okay?
Yes.
So, and you've worked in that unit since twenty thirteen and you've worked for the Aboriginal Legal Service since two thousand and five. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. On and off since two thousand and five.
And you've worked also as a criminal lawyer up in Port Hedland?
Yes.
And you also have attained a Master of Criminology from the University of Melbourne?
Yes, correct.
In terms of your particular roles and functions at the Aboriginal Legal Service, what can you tell us about your particular responsibilities?
The Aboriginal Legal Service is an Aboriginal community-controlled organisation.
I'm going to have to ask you to slow it right down. So I feel you're going in slow motion and you're probably even then going quickly, so slow it right down.
Yes, I apologize, interpreter.
You're the one hundred and twenty-fifth witness that has had to be told to slow down, so you're a lot of luck.
I'm trying to get in early.
The Aboriginal Legal Service is an Aboriginal community-controlled organisation. We have a very large criminal law practice with officers across the whole of WA and a head office in Perth. And so we have a lot of experience in representing people in complex indictable criminal trials and also in magistrate's court and duty lawyer work. And many of our clients in those courts are subject to guardianship and administration orders. We also have a family law team who practices predominantly in care and protection work. And then we have my team, which is the Civil Law and Human Rights Unit. We assist clients with a lot of police complaints and do a lot of police accountability work. Um, we assist clients in civil claims against the police and also against the Department of Justice, including the prisons. We represent clients in coronial investigations and inquests. We also assist clients in racial discrimination matters. And we also assist clients in false imprisonment matters and generally systemic advocacy. In addition to that, we have some programmes at the Aboriginal Legal Service. We have a custody notification service. So every time an Aboriginal person is taken into police custody in WA, they call the Aboriginal Legal Service and have access to an Aboriginal lawyer or support worker or a non-Aboriginal lawyer. We also have a youth engagement programme, a bail support service and a work and development programme. And so a lot of our clients are very vulnerable and they're really subject to a lot of government control and have a lot of interactions that are often negative with the government in WA.
I'll just pause there and, Ms Grace, can I turn to you? You're Christine Grace.
Yes, that's correct.
And you're speaking on behalf of Kin Disability Advocacy Inc. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And you've prepared a statement dated the seventeenth of November this year?
Yes.
And do you have any corrections or amendments to the statement?
No.
And are its contents true?
Yes.
Now, I want to ask you about Kin Disability Advocacy, if I can call it Kin. But may I start just with your background? You're currently the Advocacy Services Manager at Kin?
Yes.
And you commenced working at Kin in July twenty sixteen?
Yes.
And Kin has expanded quite a lot since then, particularly because of the introduction of the NDIS.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, in terms of your role as the Advocacy Services Manager, can you tell the Royal Commission what does that role involve and what do you do?
I, um, provide, I manage the individual advocacy programme and contribute to the systemic advocacy programme that Kin has. We have funding from DSS under the National Disability Advocacy Programme and the Royal Commission Decision Support. And we also have funding from Department of Communities in Western Australia to address state issues.
And you supervise thirteen advocates, is that right?
Yes, I supervise thirteen staff, individual advocacy officers, um, four of whom are in regional Western Australia. We have two advocacy offices in Broome, covering the West Kimberley. We have one advocate in Newman, covering the East Pilbara, and one in Mandurah, covering the Peel area.
What can you tell us about Kin as an organisation? It's an independent disability advocacy service, but what do you do and tell me about your clients?
So Kin is an advocacy services, service specifically working in a culturally diverse manner, culturally safe manner, inclusive of people from Aboriginal nations and people that need the extra support in relation to engaging with advocacy. Our staff are all expected and trained and deliver services in a culturally safe, culturally responsive manner. We don't expect our staff to know everything about each individual's culture, but we do it, we do know that they will research to find out how to best deliver a safe service to that individual.
And your, your service is not specific to First Nations people?
No.
And you've told the Royal Commission, I think, that you've got four hundred and sixty-four clients from sixty-six different ethnic backgrounds. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
The largest proportion of clients being from a Middle Eastern background?
Yes.
Followed by First Nations people?
Yes.
Uh, people from African descent?
Yes.
And then European after that?
That's correct.
And a lot of your work involves using interpreters and the translating services, is that right?
Yes.
So what can you tell us about working with clients to support them in advocacy where you're also using interpreters?
Our staff are required to engage with interpreters to ensure that the clients fully understand the context of what, what's being said, what the issues are, and that the client has, I guess, capacity to engage with our staff and tell their story to our staff in their first language.
And some of the services and supports that you provide include individual advocacy for clients, is that right? Systemic advocacy?
Yes.
Support for clients who wish to self-advocate through self-advocacy training and peer support?
Yes.
Programs and projects, and one, I think you've mentioned, working with the Royal Commission and helping clients engage with this Royal Commission. And educating members of cold communities about the Advanced Health Direct, is that right?
Yes.
And also looking at improving the capability of state government support schools and support centres to engage parents and carers of children with disability from cold background, is that right?
Yes.
So there's quite a range of services that are provided across the community in Western Australia, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And now I want to turn to a topic to, that we have in common. And that is how each of your respective services have become involved with guardianship and administration for clients in Western Australia. So, Ms Barta, can I start with you? In your statement, I think you've addressed this at paragraph seven through to twelve. But what can you tell the Royal Commission about, among the wide range of legal services that you provide, that particular part of work concerning guardianship and administration?
Yes, all the lawyers have had some dealings with the Public Advocate and the Public Trustee over many, many years. We've had a lot of clients ring up and in distress and make complaints about those offices. Unfortunately, we didn't have any capacity to assist clients substantively with those issues and we didn't have any capacity to represent clients at the State Administrative Tribunal in mid-twenty.
So can I, I mean, you heard me say something about capacity this morning. What do you mean by capacity? Is it a funding issue, a skills issue, or just not enough time to assist people?
Half of the funding issue and half of the time issue. Without going into the full funding structure, we are funded predominantly through the National Legal Assistance Programme by the Federal Attorney General's Department. And through that funding, we don't have specific funding for guardianship and administration matters, since we haven't historically assisted people with them. However, when we received funding under the Your Story Disability Legal Assistance Service in relation to assisting clients engaged with this Royal Commission, we saw that as an ancillary part of that work and saw the huge need and the huge unmet legal need that clients were appearing at the State Administrative Tribunal without legal representation and started assisting clients both with advice and with representation.
So how long has the Aboriginal Legal Service been involved in providing legal advice and legal support to clients in the guardianship and administration system?
So only for the last two and a half years, since about mid-two thousand and twenty.
And, Ms Grace, over to you. In terms of the wide range of services that Kin offers, what can you tell the Royal Commission about the involvement of Kin in guardianship and administration?
Kin is funded to do disability advocacy. We don't have a lawyer on staff. We're not funded to provide legal services. So our advocacy around state administration issues, guardianship and administration is from a point of view of advocacy support only, not representation. So we would typically assist a person to apply for a review, support them through the hearing, assist them to collate evidence or where relevant access evidence that's already at the State Administrative Administrative Tribunal. And if invited to do so by the member, we would speak with them to support what they are saying. Also ensure that that's, that support is provided in a safe way. So we make sure that staff at the State Administration Tribunal know that an interpreter may be required or there might be safety measures that need to be put in place to make it possible for a person to go there. Where it's been identified that a person has not understood the process that they've been through or what the orders are, we will spend time with them explaining what does the State Administration Tribunal do? What does the Office of the Public Advocate mean? What is an administration order? And go through that so that by the time they've made informed decisions about what their next steps are, they have all the information in a manner that they can understand it so that they can make informed decisions about what the next steps are for them.
So what training do the advocates have so that they have the knowledge about being able to explain some of these systems and processes?
So advocacy team comes from, and, sorry, I'm just. The advocacy team is made up of a number of different specialist skill sets. So we have people with a background in youth work. We have people with a background in community services. We have people with a background in social work, in in our regional offices. We have one staff member that's an accredited Aboriginal health practitioner and another staff member who's been working in the community service and health sector in, for many years. We have another staff who's. We have another staff whose background is within the Aboriginal Legal Service. And our Peel officer comes from the background of community services, employment services and social services in, in a different country.
Thank you. Now, you've both identified that over the last twelve to eighteen months, that each of your services have observed a number of guardianship and administration-related issues, particularly for First Nations communities that have caused both your organisations to have some concerns. And the evidence that we're going to address now will be focused on what those concerns are and how those concerns arose. So Ms. Barta, can I start with you in terms of what were the concerns over the past eighteen months to two years you've observed at ALS?
We've had concerns about the cultural responsiveness and trauma-informed approach being taken by both the public advocate and the public trustee. It's important to recognise that for First Nations people, they've been subject to a lot of government control since colonisation and they've been subject of protection policies. For example, in WA, we had the nineteen oh five Aborigines Act, which meant, which meant that a chief protector had total control of Aboriginal people's lives, who they married, where they worked, even took their money when they, when they were worked. And there's a lot of reference to stolen wages these days. I've seen some state government records where women have had to write to the chief protector to get hosiery or to get new boots. So there was a huge level of control under the guise of protection. As part of that, there was a recognition that the government thought that they knew best. And what my clients tell me now is that there's a continuation of that through the government systems. The history is important because every First Nation person has been affected by it. And the other thing I should have said is that children being taken away. And so the intergenerational trauma and the trauma from the stolen generations means that a lot of our clients have a lot of distrust for government agencies. And then that is compounded when they feel like their control is being taken away from them and that they don't have a right to self-determination anymore. And so the government agencies having a recognition of that, I think, is really important. And that's something that our clients say they just don't feel there is that real understanding and empathy of that position. In addition, our clients find it very difficult to speak with their allocated guardian or trustee. Anthony and Clara spoke about it this morning. Our clients find it very difficult to get through on the phone to speak with the allocated person. My understanding is that there's very few face-to-face meetings. So that means that the person, the subject of the orders, does not feel like their decision-maker really has any understanding of them, their lives, their history, their family, and how they live. It's one of the quotes that our clients have said. How can they make decisions about me when they don't see how I live and know how I live? So that's a huge issue in relation to our clients. The other big concern is for people who have had orders made for them and therefore deeming that they don't have capacity to make their own decisions, when in fact if they had some supportive decision-making supports around them, some informal supports through family or through NDIS or through other supports, that they actually could be more involved in their decision-making. So we see that as a gap. And the final really important one is the involvement of family, which again was raised this morning. Families being excluded from the process and families not being told what's going on and being encouraged to be part of their loved ones' decision-making. One of our clients, who is case study C in my statement, said that she felt like her family member was taken away from her when orders were made for him and that that was a re-traumatization like the stolen generations. Another client just recently said to me that she felt like her loved one had been taken away and that no one listens, no white people understand, and that the system has damaged us. And she said, we're controlled but not protected. And I think that really highlights the issues.
Ms. Grace, can I ask you? You've set out some of the concerns in your statement from paragraph seventeen onwards. But, and you've also shared some case studies to highlight those concerns. What would you like to tell the Royal Commission about the concerns that KIN has observed for First Nations communities over the past twelve to eighteen months?
All the last eighteen months, we never had an issue arise in the, as far as our regional advocacy in relation to guardianship or administration. Some of the issues are around when a young person is leaving the care of Department of Child Protection and Family Service. And there's an assumed, an assumption is made that the person leaving care, one, needs a guardian, and two, the guardian should not be a family member. Even when the, the person being cared for has been in stable care since they were infants. And at no stage is there a conversation, like transition planning, a conversation with the kinship carers that actually they could do this role for the person they're caring for and what sort of supports might they need if they were taking, if they were to take on that role? The assumption was made that they need someone outside of the family, either a independent community guardian, guardian or an Office of the Public Advocate-appointed guardian.
And that's a trend that you've seen in the last, what, twelve to eighteen months?
Yes.
And in terms of the work that you've done with those clients, have you been able to get any sense as to why that might be the case?
The, the common denominator is in relation to making decisions, especially around what supports should be put into someone's NDIS plan. There are other concerns around administration, especially if the person has a compensation payment for different reasons. But mainly as far as guardianship goes, it's around making decisions in relation to NDIS supports.
I want to ask you both about the experiences of your clients, but also bringing your experience to bear on this. In terms of when the guardianship or administration process might start for some. So the Royal Commission has heard that often people are unaware that there may be an application seeking orders to have substitute decision-making made for them. And it won't be until either they've found themselves attending a tribunal, be it in person or by telephone, or hearing about the orders later. Can I ask both of you, has this been a problem that you've seen in your respective practices of people not knowing that they may be subject to orders being made?
Yes, I think that is the case. I'm just trying to think of specifics. I know there are definitely clients who haven't been aware of orders. I also know of clients who have had some awareness but haven't really understood what the orders mean and the distinction between the public trustee and the public advocate. And also the children who are leaving care echo what Ms. Grace said, that we've seen quite a few clients who have had orders applied for as part of their leaving care plan and that they've had very limited involvement in that. But the ones who have come to my attention are the ones who have called the Aboriginal Legal Service for assistance. And so I don't know how many others there are who may have not been in a position to do that.
And in terms of the clients who may be subject to the guardianship or administration arrangements, is your experience that they tend to be younger people rather than older people?
My experience is all ages. We have clients, yes, all ages, from young, young to elderly, who have orders made against them. I'm sorry, I'm not sure of any more specific stats.
That's okay. And Ms. Grace, just in terms of your clients that you assist, do they tend to be younger people or older people?
Ones in regional areas tend to be younger people. And we've had clients who are aware that an order, an application has been made, but they think it's just someone, I guess, more formal to assist them to make decisions around supports and services. In one case, the client or the family were aware that there was a hearing, but they thought the hearing was something else. They didn't know it was a guardianship and administration.
So in that circumstance, how do the advocates at KIN step in and support the person or the families in most circumstances?
In those particular circumstances, orders were already made before the families approached KIN. So then KIN would assist them to firstly, understand the context of what the orders are, talk to them about what the options of, what to do next. If our staff in the regional areas haven't had a lot of experience in the guardian in the State Administration Tribunal area, they will call me and we will have a meeting, a family meeting with the family involved, the individual, and the regional advocates from that area. So that, again, that the families or the individuals have the information they need to decide what they wish to do next.
So once the orders are made, has it been your experiences in your services that people feel like, oh, what can we do about this? Or have you got a sense that people are very, you know, interested in challenging those orders or seeking to have those orders revoked? What's been your experience of that? Perhaps, Ms. Grace, can I start with you?
Yes. Once an order is made and, I guess, the individual or the families that are the primary carers of that individual understand the context of that order, they often find that they are now being separated from the decision-making about the person subject to the guardianship order. And then they want to review that order.
And do you help them sort of work out how to go about doing that? Or does that involve having to contact a legal service?
Well, there's two parts to that. Yes, we would refer them to legal services. Access to legal services is limited because capacity for community legal services is very low. And so often the only options that our clients have is to self-represent with the support of advocacy. And so we would support them through that process.
And Ms. Barta, we heard Anthony's evidence earlier today about an application that he made in relation to Clara's medical treatment and decisions. And the chair asked him, why didn't you apply for an order more generally? And he said, well, I didn't have the knowledge or I needed to get legal advice. You have represented Anthony in part of his processes of working through the SAT and systems. Has Anthony's experience been something that's reflected among other clients that you've had in having a little bit of knowledge but not a lot of knowledge and requiring the assistance of lawyers to be able to, to take action?
Yes, I think there are all different types of families. So there are families, we have family members who have education at tertiary level, such as Anthony, who has some idea of these sorts of systems and what they can do about it. There are other families who don't have the education level and there are other families who, you know, have got a lot going on and are finding, you know, survival pretty difficult, if that's particularly in the regions. And so I think there's a difference between the different families. But what they all have in common is that they will fight for their family member. And a client recently said that she had asked and asked and asked for a review. From what my understanding is, often the orders are made for the maximum five-year term, which is a long time. And this particular client said that she had been trying to seek a review, but it wasn't until the Aboriginal Legal Service got involved that we managed to be able to assist her with the paperwork and actually get that back before the tribunal. So I think there are a lot of people who find that process so difficult. Also, the tribunal is based in Perth, and so if you live in the regions, it can be very difficult to even have access to, to that place. And one client, who was a child who'd turned eighteen and an order had been sought as part of his leaving care plan. I'm just checking, I think, I'm just trying to check which case study it is. Sorry.
That's right. Let's see if I can turn that up for you.
I think it was, I think it's case study M and paragraph seventy-eight. He wasn't aware of the hearing. Sorry, let me just make sure that.
Is also, is it L? That was the one I'm wondering.
Yes, I think, I think it is M. I'm thinking L. Sorry, apologies. He, he only became aware of it because his criminal defence lawyer made him aware of it. And then unfortunately was not able to be, we weren't able to assist him on that day. And the order was made for five years. Sorry, that's him. There was one other, sorry, they're all men around the same age. There's another client who, once we did advise him that we could seek a review and assist him, we didn't assist up until that point. He said five, five years is okay, I'll just wait the five years because he felt so disempowered and that there's no point in going, you know, looking into it further. So that we do also have those clients who sort of just think, what's the point in engaging with this system?
And can I ask you about when the clients have engagement with either the person who serves as their guardian? It'll be a person who exercises a delegation from the public advocate or a delegate of the trustee. We have heard, and I think this might reflect your experiences, that there might be very little contact with the guardian or the trustee. It's a little day-to-day contact. And people might not even meet their guardian or trustee from time to time. Is that something that your clients have experienced?
Yes, definitely.
And Ms. Grace, is that?
Yes. They experience, in fact, just last week, in one of our regional offices, one regional advocate received an email from an appointed guardian that was appointed over twelve months ago requesting that the advocate provide information to the guardian on how the guardian's client was doing. It's communication between the client and the, either the public guardian or the public trustee is challenging at best. One appointed guardian for one of my clients or the parent of one of my clients phoned me because she was having difficulty communicating with the client. It was on the record that the client needed an interpreter, but the guardian insisted that the client could speak enough English to engage with the guardian without an interpreter. But it was very clear to me that while the client may have had some functional English, the client was not provided with sufficient information through a guardian that she could give informed, appropriate responses to the calling guardian.
Do you think if there is a lack of communication or direct contact, that that might create some confusion in the mind of the person for whom the orders are made about who provides services or decide what? About who provides services or decide what services or what doctors to see or when to see doctors? Do you think there's some confusion about the guardian or administrator being like a case manager as, rather than the person who just makes decisions? Do you see that?
But I think the appointed guardians make it very clear that they're not case managers. But I guess within the role of a guardian, it's they needs to be, they need to be getting information independent of service providers to make informed choices about what is in, you know, how to best, I guess, support the client at this.
Do you mean by that, that there should be an expectation that the guardian isn't somebody who just approves in the sense of yes or no? But the expectation is that the guardian will make decisions by looking at a full suite of information that might be relevant to the decision at hand? Is that what you mean?
Yes, that's correct.
And Miss Bart, what's been your client's experience? If there's been any confusion about the role of a substitute decision-maker to just make decisions as opposed to managing all of the services or having our case manager type role?
Yes, I don't, I haven't heard clients use that case manager sort of language before. But what I have been told is that they feel it's very reactive, the decisions made by mainly the public advocate, but also the public trustee. So for example, if a client needs medical assistance or housing, we've had many clients who are homeless, who are under orders, that it would only be once someone takes a decision to the public advocate, then they'll make a decision, rather than proactively making sure that their clients have got housing or have got medical services. If I could refer to case study F, I'm at forty-seven of, paragraph forty-seven of my statement. F was a very special client to all of us at the ALS, so I'm gonna get.
Tell us about her, and if you do, I'll jump in.
Yeah, thank you. She was very, very special. She had experienced every single type of trauma that our clients had experienced. She was involved in a motor vehicle accident when she was quite young and she had lost the feeling in her leg, so she was a wheelchair user. She also had an acquired brain injury, which made her quite difficult to communicate with. The way that she communicated is she used the F and the C words, that was just the way that she spoke. And I think a lot of carers and service providers found that quite disrespectful, despite her not meaning any disrespect, it was just the way that she communicated. And she would get very dysregulated very easily. She had a lot of trust issues from all the things that she'd been through. But she would come to the ALS and say, no one else is helping me, despite being under orders. There was one time where she was, the police had taken her from her home because her carers were not able to calm her down, and she needed serious medical attention. She had very bad pressure sores that had progressed to septicaemia. And the police took her to a hospital in Perth, and the hospital workers didn't want to help her because she was being difficult, inverted commas. And she had nowhere else to go, so she came to the Aboriginal Legal Service office, which, you know, we're not a medical service, but we calmed her down and called an ambulance. She ended up passing away due to those pressure sores, and it was just so heartbreaking for us because she should have had help, she needed help, she needed help to make her decisions. And she needed support workers who were patient and kind, and she needed medical staff who are gonna help her deal with these pressure sores. But because it was so difficult for her to get assistance, she got really sick and she passed away. And it was one of those examples where we, as lawyers, had tried to engage the public advocate in her care. And we tried to connect both the hospital and the public advocate together to talk about the decisions in relation to her treatment. But often the public advocate didn't even know she was in hospital. And sometimes the hospital staff didn't know to talk to the public advocate about decisions. And so we saw that as a very big gap in the way that the system could be working in a proactive way to actually make sure that someone is getting the support they need, but unfortunately she didn't get it.
If the test to be applied is to determine what is in the person's best interest in relating to the decisions to be made, what factors do you think should be taken into account to address best interests and in F's case, for example?
Before I answer that, best interest model, I do have some issues with because it brings that way, you know, best ideas versus the supportive decision-making model. So I'll just preface my response with that. In relation to this woman's best interests, you have to, in my view, you have to speak to the person, you know, and give them that autonomy and self-determination as to how they would like decisions made about them. You also need to take time in speaking with people. And I understand due to resourcing and other considerations, the advocates don't always have the time to take with people. Come back to the face-to-face communication that we were talking about earlier. In my experience with that particular client, with other clients, really taking hours to talk to them, to yarn with them, to connect with them, to empathise with them, to put yourself in their shoes. And I've heard clients say that many times about decision-makers. You need to put yourself in our shoes or our loved one's shoes. And so, sorry, coming back to the question, the best interest, I think, is listening, listening to the person, and then once they're engaged in their own decision-making, then in my experience, they're going to be more willing to listen to doctors and you know, because of her ABI, she had a lot of issues with, she didn't like staying in hospital, for example. So she would self-discharge or they would discharge her due to behaviour. And so, in my experience with her, when she felt empowered about her own decision-making and felt listened to and felt safe, really importantly, then she would stay and she would have the medical treatment that she needed.
Can I ask you both now about the concept of culturally safe or culturally responsive practices? Which is a topic that you've both raised in your statements as a very important aspect of supporting somebody to make decisions or think through problems. Miss Grace, can I start with you? In terms of practising cultural safety and the work your advocates do, what can you tell the Royal Commission about why cultural safety is important? And if you were to explain how cultural safety practices operate within KIN, that would be very helpful as well.
Cultural safety matters because I guess individuals make decisions based on based on their culture, based on the family system they're in, based from their own experience. And all of those things come into, I guess, into play in making a decision. And before you can make, before an individual can make decisions, they need information that's presented to them in a culturally appropriate way. And in a credible way, so that they then feel confident with the people they're engaging in, and they build trust and rapport. If you don't have those basic things as a start, it's no point, you know, it's really just a superficial acknowledge, engagement in that sense. So making sure that a client feels safe culturally is, I guess, the starting point.
How do we know what safe might be? How do we know that we've created a safe space if, even as advocates, we're bringing our own assumptions and our own experience? How do you create a safe space?
Ask the client what's safe for them. So advocates would be expected to research something about particular cultures they work with. So for example, we might initially have to call a client with an interpreter. Might need to ask for information either from the client or the referrer first about, you know, what's going to work? Do they need a specific interpreter? Do they need an interpreter of a specific gender? Do they need an interpreter not from their own cultural background, but from a different cultural background because of confidentiality issues? Do we need to think about engaging an interpreter from another state for safety reasons? As far as, and that then allows the initial conversation to start about meeting their needs. In relation to our regional clients, when we employ staff, we employ staff from the local communities. They live in the local communities. They have a long-term relationship with those communities and a well-established that well-established experience in those communities. They understand the cultural groups in that context. And people will, will come to them for information. If they can't provide that service, for example, because they're women and it's men's business, they will find the appropriate person to support that client. So that's where it starts from, and then I guess it builds from there.
And Miss Bart, for you thinking about cultural safety for First Nations people, particularly given the historical context that you've described a little earlier, what are culturally safe practices and how are they exercised in day-to-day engagement with clients?
It's a huge, huge question. So I'll try and perhaps summarise. I think you could spend a couple of days talking about what's a culturally safe response. And also I'd like to acknowledge again that I'm Wadulla, so I'm not Aboriginal. So I need to be careful the way that I, that I speak. I think the number one thing is being aware of the history of colonisation and the fact that all of us, settlers, colonists, we all have privilege and we live on land that was not ceded. That's the first point, and we need to always recognise that. And we need to recognise, particularly as lawyers, in my view, that we're part of the system of oppression. Secondly, there needs to be an understanding of the different cultural nuances and groups. So for example, many First Nations groups have more of a sharing culture when it comes to resources, as opposed to the more sort of mainstream white culture where now finance is our own, and that can come up a lot in public trustee matters. There are other importances like connection to country, connection to family, the extraordinarily complex kinship structure. Miss Grace said a good way is to ask the client, and I agree with that. I think also another good way is to ask the family or the community, and particularly elders. So when I'm particularly in more regional, remote areas, I will always ask if I'm not sure, and I'll always come from a place of ignorance and ask, is this okay? Or does that person need that person in the room? Or do they need that person in the room? Because often we'll assume, you know, for example, they might, a man, you might say, well, you know, your mother-in-law should be the one who comes and supports you. And he'll say, no, no, for cultural reasons, we can't be in the same room. So being sort of alive to those issues, but not not being an expert in them, because we never will be, but asking those questions and being aware of it. The other really important factor is to have Aboriginal staff and Aboriginal leadership. So it's easy for me because I sit under an Aboriginal board, an Aboriginal CEO and Aboriginal Deputy CEO, so I take all my lead from them. And we have nearly fifty percent Aboriginal staff at the Aboriginal Legal Service. And so I know Anthony said it this morning too, sometimes you need to have a First Nations person in the room. And we will do that at work. We will get someone in if, if there's not an Aboriginal lawyer available, an Aboriginal court officer available. If it has to be a non-Aboriginal lawyer, we will get someone to sit with us so that we can make sure the client feels safe.
The final topic I want to ask you both about, and I haven't covered everything in your statement, but the commissioners have your statement, is secrecy. And the experience of having guardianship orders made and that sense that you're not allowed to speak about that, not allowed to talk about what occurred and that sense of becoming invisible. Has this been an experience that you've seen for any of your clients? Miss Bart, I'll start with you first.
I'm just thinking, there is an element of secrecy and not being able to speak out. I think that's for many, many reasons though. And I said before, I think often people don't know how to fight the system. Often our clients have got a lot of things going on. A lot of our clients don't have stable housing. A lot of our clients live in poverty. A lot of our clients have got children being taken away from them. And so often they just don't have the time or the energy to engage in these systems. And there's often that intersectionality of disadvantage. Often, I think, also people just don't know about what is going on for themselves or their family members. You know, even the orders, sometimes people can't read, so if they get an order posted to them, they won't necessarily even just know what that means. And as we've sort of both alluded to, there are limited advocacy and legal services across the state. You know, we all do the best we can, but really we need many, many more service providers across, across the whole of WA.
Miss Grace, any observations from you about that sense of secrecy and being invisible?
Yes, I think especially in relation to our regional clients, the secrecy shame would be like they've gotten an order that they may not understand or didn't really understand what the implications are for, for them, or both the individual being represented and that the family who are the primary carers. So it takes a little bit of time for them to build up enough confidence to engage with advocacy around telling this story. And they will only do that when they feel safe culturally to do that. And, and so that means there lies the importance of ensuring that advocacy staff are, you know, from, employed from the cultures that they're engaging with. Because that's the way our, our clients feel safe to engage.
Thank you. I'll just check now if the chair and the commissioners have any questions.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions. First, I'll ask Commissioner Ryan.
Just one detail that I was, you mentioned that there was, when you were talking about case study, if, Miss Bart, you referred to the fact that the public guardian didn't know that the man was in hospital, or that the F was in hospital, sorry. And that the staff didn't know how to speak to the public advocate, and there was a significant gap there. Do you have any suggestions as to how that gap might be closed? Is it possible to do something about that?
Yes, I would have thought so. What we've heard already today about people actually answering, answering their phones, I think would help. And there could be some sort of alert for when people go into hospital. We have the same issue when people go into prisons. Their public guardian doesn't know that they're in prison or which prison they're in. So it could be as simple as an ad hoc phone call, or surely they could be, in my view, some sort of alert system for both prisons and hospitals and other relevant places to make sure that their relevant public guardian or public trustee knows where that person is.
Who would trigger that? I mean, I don't mean to be in any way cynical, but it's not as if everybody's got a barcode or something on them that, that would register that. What, what database would, would help to make that happen? I mean, I agree with you, it's a gap. I'm just trying to think of, you know, has someone made a suggestion as to how? I mean, I suppose look at some instances, the person themselves might disclose that they're under guardianship, and that would suggest something might happen, but do you have any others?
Yes, I think there are two categories. One where the person hasn't disclosed, and I think that can make it very difficult for the service provider to then speak with their public advocate. But in this case, she had disclosed, and she'd been at that same hospital many times, so they had a record that she was under orders. Um, you know, there's a lot of bureaucracy and there's lots of different government departments um across Western Australia. I'm sure the other states are the same. Um, Department of Health is separate from Department of Justice, so that might be trickier. But in relation to the prisons, the Department of Justice has oversight. Um, you know, the public advocate and the public trustee sit under the Department of Justice. So I'm not sure, I'm sure there's some sort of um technology way of, of fixing that gap.
Well, I guess if there wasn't technology, I suppose usually when someone enters a hospital, there's often a discussion about who's your family. It's rare that they would be, I imagine, entering a hospital without a discussion. And then maybe it would be disclosed that the person didn't discuss any family and there might be a discussion as to, well, is it possible a person's under guardianship? I mean, how would they make decisions in a hospital without knowing that a person was under guardianship?
Thanks. I'm not sure.
I think the last one was a rhetorical.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't answer, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I thank you both for your uh evidence. My question to both of you is, when you were talking about culturally safe uh services and you both said a very important aspect is to ask the person themselves. We've heard in this Royal Commission of many disabled people who are isolated, who are kept from services or don't know anything about perhaps even the world around them. How do we address those barriers?
Sometimes that can be difficult. Starts, I, I guess, um, if we, uh, depending on the living circumstances of that person, whether there can, there can be outreach or whether someone refers that individual to, to our service, um, then at least we can start putting some, some support. And the first step would be letting that person tell their story. Um, in, in a way that doesn't compromise. Sometimes if they're only engaging with one service provider, it makes it more difficult to engage because often, as, as we heard this morning, a support worker may be in the room with them or um nearby and they don't feel safe to disclose that. So, so having some access to independent services is really important. That's why we always um, when we're providing advocacy for NDIS participants, we will always advocate for the appointment of an independent support coordinator. However, not everyone subject to a, a guardianship and administration order are participants in the NDIS. And it's about finding out how we can safely engage with that person independently.
Thank you. Miss Bart, did you want to add anything?
Just very briefly, Commissioner, I think just coming back to just sitting with someone and taking the time to connect with them the best you can. And even if they don't want to speak to you, sitting there and being with them and being present with them.
Thank you both.
We've spent a fair bit of time talking about the role and effect of the public advocate or public guardian. Um, in practice, what happens with the appointment of guardians or administrators when it's not the public advocate or the public trustee? Do you try to have others appointed? And if so, who are they normally? Are they family members? Are they someone who is independent? Um, just what's your experience with that in each, in each case, one after the other? Miss Bart, perhaps you go first and then.
Yes, thank you, Chair. That's one of the things that we've been really trying to work with our clients um to achieve. So where the public advocate has been appointed, we will work very hard with the clients um to then go back and have the orders reviewed and have a family member appointed, like what you heard this morning has happened. Um, we find that sometimes the family members do try and tell um the relevant people that they are willing and able to support their family member and assist them in decision-making. But there can be a lot of barriers to that. So if they live in the regions, that can be, make it difficult for them. Sometimes if they have um limited phone reception, that can be a reason that people say, well, we can't get a hold of you on the phone. Um, sometimes if I can say, I think there's a racial discriminatory element that they think that an Aboriginal family member isn't up to the task. Um, so, so many family members have come and said, we want to be the one who is supporting our family member where orders are appropriate. And they do, when in my experience, they do a lot of work to prove that they um are across those things. We've also heard that given the NDIS is so complex, that many people find it difficult to understand and that's a reason for orders to be made. The family members who I've spoken to have said that they feel confident enough to navigate that bureaucracy along with specialist support coordinators and be that person for their family. So many, in my experience, many family members are, are willing to do that, that role and sometimes do, sometimes don't. There are other cases where there are, I guess, limited family members who are able to step into that role. And that's when the government um agencies, you know, probably are the appropriate um decision-makers for those people. And that's when they need to um look at sort of improving their systems for those First Nations clients.
You're right.
So um, in a regional, a regional experience is that the families weren't even given the option of providing the sort of guardianship or decision support, or they weren't told that under the Carers' Recognition Act, they could still support the person as the primary carer to make those decisions without there being need for a formal guardianship um order being made. What um Kin is intending to do at some point is ensure that our regional families know that an appointment of guardian is a last resort. And if there are.
This is what the Act says.
Yes. Um, if a person needs support to make informed decisions about what's best, either for themselves or the family member they're supporting, then where in the community can they go to get independent information about that? So could it be um independent advocacy? Could it be uh financial counselling in relation to assisting set up an appropriate budget? Um, there's all sorts of, depending on what the decision to be made is, would depend on what service you might find um, go to, to find the information you need to make that appointment. In our, um, we have supported families through a review. And in one of those cases very recently, last week, the orders were changed that family members are now, an extended family member is now the appointed decision-maker for that individual. In my view, there needs to be more, the Office of the Public Advocate in Western Australia has the authority to investigate the need for the appointment of a guardian and who that guardian should be. I've only, only in one of these cases in my time at Kin have I ever heard of an investigation being conducted. And when you ring the Office of the Public Advocate to express some concern about an individual, the standard answer is make, make an application to SAT. It's not, we're not a clinical service. We don't assess a person's capacity, whether they need a guardian or not. We have a, a responsibility to, I guess, raise concerns around vulnerable people where there are one, where there are concerns to do that. So I think there's got to be more information about what in actual fact is, what the implications are of a guardianship and administration order, number one, presented in a manner that people can easily understand. What are the alternatives to a guardianship order in relation to who are the safe people in that family's or that person's network or family that can support, either support the individual or support the family to make informed decisions, especially where it is evidence that maybe a substitute decision-maker is required and build the family's confidence that they actually do have the skills to provide that and they are best placed to do so because they know that individual the best because they've been looking after that individual since infancy.
Miss Grace, you said, I think that you, your organisation, Kim, has four hundred and sixty-four clients.
Yes.
From, I think you said sixty odd ethnic groups, maybe more. Um, we've been talking a lot about First Nations people, Aboriginal people and guardianship or administration orders made in respect of them. And it's entirely appropriate that we do. But I'm just wondering whether the experiences we're hearing about and the lessons we're learning concerning the way in which First Nations people can be supported uh to exercise decision-making capacity um can be applied to other groups that you're familiar with. Do we have, I understand completely, I think, the unique character of First Nations people and their experiences and so forth. But nonetheless, are there lessons that can be transferred to other groups?
Yes, there, yes, there are. Um, unfortunately, even in this day and age, we still get referrals to say the person needs advocacy because they don't speak English or they have low levels of literacy in their own language and in English. Um, and even though government services in Western Australia need to comply with a language services policy, it's just the basic of communication. If it's, there needs to be more application to that. But yes, I, I guess, um, those issues would also apply to people from a culturally diverse background. And um, it starts with, I guess, meeting the individual. We're making sure that the services provided meet the needs of that individual and are delivered in a way that's appropriate regardless of what cultural background they come from.
All right, thank you uh very much. Um, Miss Eastman, there, any, there are no more questions from you?
No, thank you.
Uh, in that case, uh, may I thank both of you for your statements and for your evidence today and for the work that you do in uh Western Australia. Uh, we're most appreciative of the assistance you've given us and the insights you've provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Miss Eastman, what do we do now?
Well, I'm going to ask you to have a ten-minute adjournment. But before we do that, could you receive into evidence Miss Bart's written statement and various documents referred to or attached to her statement? Mark them exhibit thirty point zero two four through to uh thirty point zero two eight.
Yes.
And for Miss Grace's statement and her CV, if you could mark those documents, thirty point zero two nine and thirty point zero three zero. I know the numbers are not sequential from this morning, but there is a method to uh the approach that we're taking so that at the end, all of the documents will be sequential. Thank you.
I never doubted the methodology, Miss Eastman.
Some may, all right, uh, if we could adjourn for.
Anyway, I'll, I'll admit them into evidence, notwithstanding the absence of a intelligible sequence.
Thank you. For ten minutes?
Yes, we'll adjourn to ten.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned. The Royal Commission is now in session.
Yes, Miss Eastman.
Thank you. Our next witness is Pauline Bagdonavichius, who is the public advocate of Western Australia, and should take an affirmation.
Yes, I hope I'm going to pronounce your name correctly. Is it Miss Bagdonavich, Vichius?
Agdonavichius.
Yes.
Okay.
In any case, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence and for the very detailed statement uh that uh you have given us. If you'd be kind enough to follow the instructions of my associate who's located to your right, she will administer the affirmation to you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes, or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. I'll now ask Miss Eastman to ask you some questions.
Uh, so your name is Pauline, and I hope I get the pronunciation right, uh, Bagdon Vicious. And you are the public uh advocate of Western Australia. I might need you just to say yes. And you've provided three statements to the Royal Commission.
Yes.
Can I take you through each of the statements? The first is a statement dated the fourth of November twenty twenty-two. Have you got um any amendments or corrections to any part of that statement?
No, but there was a supplementary letter provided, um, I believe, last Friday.
So I've got, that's what I'm just going to describe as the second statement. So that's an undated supplementary statement, which uh provides some additional material under response to paragraph eleven. So that's the second statement of one and a half pages. Have you got that one?
Yes.
And then there's the third statement dated the eleventh of November twenty twenty-two. And that responds to a notice from the Royal Commission to address some issues in relation to Calara's case.
Yes.
Are there any corrections or matters that you want to raise in relation to that statement dated the eleventh of November?
No.
And are the contents of those statements otherwise true and correct?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I wonder, before I um introduce you and take uh the Commissioners through your evidence in relation to your functions and powers, I thought I might start with Calara's case and Anthony's evidence this morning. You were in the hearing room this morning.
Uh huh.
And you saw um Anthony give his evidence and also the recording of Calara's evidence.
Would you mind?
Yes, okay, yes.
Yes or no, or maybe is the case, maybe?
And the statement that you've provided of the eleventh of November um responds to a range of matters concerning Calara's case and the appointment of both a ga, a guardian and an administrator. Are we right in understanding that that statement has been prepared on a review of the relevant records held by your office?
Yes.
And do you personally have had no involvement in Calara's case? You were not her guardian. And to the extent that any issues arise with respect to the appointment of the public trustee and the management of the financial arrangements, you can't speak to those matters. That's not your area of responsibility, is that right?
Yes.
And in the statement that you've provided, you've sought by reference to the documents to identify. you've sought by reference to the documents to identify some of the key dates and respond to some of the key issues identified in Anthony's statement as well. Is that right?
Yes.
And to the extent that you have made some concessions in relation to the way in which Calara's case was dealt with, you've responded to that and been frank in the statement that you've provided to the Royal Commission. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
So for example, you've said on your review of the file, it appears no discussions occurred between O P A and the persons involved in the treatment and care of Calara before the appointment was made. But you say your records, for example, identify two attempts made by the investigator advocate to hold telephone discussions with the case manager at the facility and also with Anthony. So that's an example.
Yes.
Um, thank you for providing the Royal Commission with a very detailed statement that responds to aspects of Calara's case. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to say anything in response to the evidence that you've heard this morning. And there may be some matters that you've heard this morning that you were not aware of based on the review of the records held by your office. Was there anything that you wanted to say in response to this morning's evidence?
Um, at the outset, I want to acknowledge my deep respect, pay respect to Calara and to Anthony and particularly to Anthony for his role in pursuing the rights of his mother and recognizing the challenges. I mean, and recognizing that in that context, he had many challenges to overcome. Um, I accept that we should have done a better job in relation to how we worked with Calara and Anthony. The, one of those key issues for me is that we should have had more frequent contact with her and her son. Had this occurred, the guardian would have been engaged, particularly with Anthony more. Decision-making could have been done in a more culturally appropriate way. And the move to having Anthony providing a role in decision-making for his support for his mum, I formally or informally, could have been supported and facilitated sooner, in my view. The lack of contact and engagement in an appropriate way with Clara and Anthony by our office is regrettable.
Um, when you hear stories or circumstances like that, is it something that the Office of the Public Advocate reflects on and reviews in terms of improving processes and procedures?
Yes, we do.
I want to ask you some questions about how these arrangements operate in Western Australia and some of the processes. And thank you for setting that out in some detail in the statement. So your role as the public advocate is an independent statutory officer and you're appointed under the Guardianship and Administration Act nineteen ninety of Western Australia. Is it right that you are responsible for the strategic direction and control of the functions of the O P A, so the Office of the Public Advocate? And that you have to work to the requirements and the rules set out in the Guardianship Act? Is that right?
Yes.
In terms of your particular function, section ninety-seven of the Act sets out your primary functions. And I want to just ask you about each element there. They involve investigation of concerns about the wellbeing of adults with a decision-making disability and whether there is a need for an application for a guardian or administrator to be appointed. Uh, just pausing there, is that role performed by what we've heard as investigators?
Yes.
Then the second function is the investigation of specified applications made to the state administrative tribunal to assist it to determine whether a guardian or administrator should be appointed. That's slightly different function to the first function. Does that arise when applications are made? And there may be a referral from the tribunal to your office to assist in relation to whether a guardian or administrator should be appointed?
Yes, that's.
Is any part of that role concerned making an assessment of a person's capacity for decision-making?
Not, not, we are not decision-makers about capacity. We might collect evidence to support capacity.
So what would be, so what would be involved in terms of any investigation about concerns about the wellbeing of adults with decision-making disability? Or an investigation of specified applications made to the tribunal?
It's, the concerns are focused on whether or not a person is able to make decisions um in a reasoned way um as to their personal situation or in relation to financial matters. So in terms of that investigation, our role is limited to looking at whether or not there are any concerns for risk to the person, um, what the person's wishes are in terms of their circumstances and gathering information in terms of that person's circumstances, their views and wishes, the views and wishes of other significant parties, including their families or service providers.
So just can I make sure that I understand how you're using particular expressions there? So the first, you've talked about a person's decision-making. What do you mean by decision-making?
Um, whether or not somebody has capacity to make decisions um and what, and making those decisions so that uh, it's about looking at the situation of vulnerable people um and assessing, uh, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit circular.
Okay, so if, if I'm, I'm trying to understand what decision-making means. First of all, is decision-making limited to a particular class of decisions? Is decision-making, in the way you use it, limited to decisions about legal matters, for example?
It could be decisions about a raft of matters which are outlined in the Act in either relation to their personal circumstances, in relation to their health. Um, there's services they're receiving, their um, um, and whether or not in terms of how they're managing in terms of their financial situation.
So it's not, well, you don't mean decision-making in terms of how they make choices about anything and everything in their life, do you?
No, it's also about how other people might be exploiting that person. So the issue is around the focus on what do we need in a protective sense to put in place to ensure that this person is able to make their own decisions? Are they safe? Are they protected? Do they need support with other people assisting them with some critical decisions?
And how does a, an investigator go about undertaking that task in terms of investigating decision-making? Mindful that they're not assessing capacity?
Um, we may receive a referral to our office, for instance, by the police, where the police have had concerns that through an investigation of a family in domestic violence situation, they may have come across an older person whom they are concerned about, who appears to be being neglected in the care of the family and different circumstances around that. So we would seek to see the person, gain their understanding, seek to see the family, gather what information we can in terms of what service providers and supports are available to that person and potentially work with the family. Um, if we, if we can find a less restrictive option to thinking there's a need for a guardian or administrator to become involved in the situation because on the face of it, it appears to be neglected. What are, what other options are in place? What can the family do? Is their care as stressed? Can we help assist them to access other services? Or do we need to progress with an application to the tribunal?
You also used the word risks a little earlier and assessing risk or determining risk. When you use that word risk, what do you mean?
Um, it's harm, significant harm to the person, is the person at risk of significant harm by them, by others or by themselves in terms of their living situation? And do, therefore, they need more support in that regard in relation to their decision-making disability?
And I, I might come and ask you a little more about the concept of risk and assessing risk later on. And I come back and just finish on section ninety-seven. The third area in terms of primary functions for the public advocate is guardianship for personal lifestyle and treatment-related decisions. When the tribunal determines that there is no one else suitable, willing and available to act as the person's guardian. So that, are we right in understanding that when we're talking about the public advocate becoming the guardian, that occurs because there is no other suitable person to take on that role? Or a person who is willing and available to act as the person's guardian? Is that right?
That's correct, unless I've been appointed, as occurs in a few cases, jointly with another person, such as a family member, to make decisions jointly with them.
So in effect, if, if the public advocate is appointed the guardian, you're sort of the last resort. Is that right?
Yes.
And then the final function is information, advice and training on how to protect the human rights of adults with decision-making disability. And, um, and your statement addresses some of those matters. But what, when we're talking about this function in the legislation, what are we talking about when we talk about the human rights of adults with decision-making disability?
Hmm.
What does that mean?
It's, it's in terms of the right for people to have less, the least restrictive option available if they appear to have a decision-making disability. If, and to the extent that a person can make their own decisions, then that is clearly what is preferred. Um, if, and um, and I guess all of our community education is about ensuring people, encouraging people while they still have capacity to actually inform other people of what their views and wishes are to the extent that they can through enduring powers of attorney, enduring powers of guardianship and advanced health directives. Um, it is about how then, when somebody appears to have lost the capacity to make those decisions, how we ensure that they are protected in a way that still maintains um their rights as people to live as independently as they can within, within the, as, as appropriate to their circumstances.
So is that how the office sort of approaches and understands the concept of human rights?
In general terms?
I want to ask you about the number of people under guardianship in Western Australia. And you provided the following information to the Royal Commission. It's paragraph thirty-eight of the statement. So as at the twenty-fourth of October this year, there were three thousand two hundred and thirteen people for whom the public advocate operates or represents as the guardian. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you may not know the answer to this, but I think the report provided by the tribunal, uh, by the council has the number at five thousand six hundred and two applications. So do you know the number of applications that there have been for guardianship in Western Australia?
No.
Coming back to the three thousand two hundred and thirteen people, in terms of the particular reason why they may have a decision-making disability, thirty-one percent live with mental illness, twenty-eight percent live with intellectual disability, twenty-five percent with dementia and fifteen percent with acquired brain injury. And then there's a category of one percent with disability recorded as others. In terms of helping us understand uh the circumstances for individuals who might live with mental illness, and that's a third of the people who have a public advocate guardian. What does mental illness mean within your system? What would be the defining characteristics for a person?
Uh, that their primary disability is related to psychosocial issues. And um many would be in treatment through mental health services in Western Australia.
Would it be a description of someone who lives with a lifelong condition of mental illness? Or is this referring to people who may have an acute situation or circumstance of mental illness that may not be lifelong?
It's both.
In terms of intellectual disability, does the Public Advocate's Office have a working definition of intellectual disability? And if so, can you assist us?
No, it's a very broad definition that we've, we have, we have applied and utilized for many years.
And in terms of dementia, does that require the person to have a di, a medical diagnosis of dementia?
It is the diagnosis that's been identified at the time applications were made to the tribunal.
Okay. We asked you about the breakdown of people by reference to age. And two-thirds, so sixty-three point three three percent of clients were aged under sixty-five and a third, so thirty-six percent or thereabouts, over the age of sixty-five. Would we be right in understanding that the clients over the age of sixty-five would for the most part be presenting with dementia?
For the most part, but there's certainly a number of our represented persons who live past sixty-five, who have intellectual disability or, and others with um mental health illness that goes, um, who live much longer.
And in terms of the, the people under the age of sixty-five, um, are you able to assist us in terms of the cohorts? Uh, is this predominantly young people, say, in teenagers through to sort of early twenties? Or are you just talking about the sort of whole span in terms of the, the different sort of categories? I probably haven't explained that very well.
Um, it's the whole span because I'm appointed for young people from the age of eighteen upwards.
Uh, with respect to First Nations clients, I think it's right from your materials that seventeen percent of all people who are uh, who have a public advocate guardian are First Nations clients. Is that right?
Yes.
How does that sit in proportion to the overall population in Western Australia?
It's an over-representation, given that the representation of First Nations people is around, you know, three, three point three percent.
That's a very significant over-representation.
Yes.
Uh, how, do you know if there's been any research or examination as to why that, that number is so high?
No.
Your office hasn't done any research into examining why First Nations clients are disproportionately represented in terms of public guardians?
No.
And sixty-six percent of the clients were, or are N D I S participants. Is that right?
Yes.
In terms of the cold community, at paragraph fifty-one, you've set out in some detail the different cultural backgrounds in relation to people from culturally and linguistically diverse communities. And there's quite a sort of large range of different cultures identified in your statement. If you want to have a look at paragraph fifty-one. Can I ask you, is it that the cultural background identified by a person's country of birth? Or is there a different way of collecting information about identifying called person?
Uh, I believe it's country of birth. Um, or, I'm sorry, I actually don't know the answer to that. Perhaps I should come back to you.
Okay. So it's just how you define cold or culturally and linguistically diverse, whether it's just country of birth or that there's a broader definition of that. So uh, in terms of the number of people who are under the public advocate's guardianship regime, you're not able to tell us the average time that a client will be subject to guardianship orders. Is that right?
That's correct.
That you've got a database which you describe as Pac-Man. And is that the database that retains all of the information of your office in relation to clients?
It is.
And can you just give us a brief overview of how that system works? Because I want to understand where the difficulties are in being able to identify some of the data and information that we've asked you.
Sure, um, we record a, a demographic. a, a demographic information, personal details in relation to each of our clients. We record, um, we have a, um, case note system, so we can event, they're, they're called events. And staff enter various events under various headings in relation to matters um, that they're dealing with, be it as an investigation or as a, um, as the guardian. Uh, we also have what we call casework screens where we can record things in relation to particular orders. Um, so we have an investigation open, then there's a particular screen for the investigation order, and then that's closed when the investigation is finished. If the public advocate is appointed a new investig- a new guardian.
Start to slow down a little bit, if that's okay.
Yep, a new guardianship screen, a guardianship screen, casework screen would be opened. And that would be live for the period of that appointment. As in when we have a guardianship review, there is another casework screen open for that. And then they are closed if and when we are, the public advocate is reappointed or the public advocate is revoked. So it's, uh, the system, unfortunately, at this, I mean, it's been a system that we've had in place since, um, at the time I commenced. At the office, we introduced it in the second year after I had started. It was well on its way to development at the time I started, so it's back in two thousand and nine. It is a system where we can't go back in time to extract other reports, so we have to do things in terms of major report runs come thirty June, end of, you know, um, end of the month in relation to the demographic information that we collect. But it's very difficult to get some, some information that would obviously be helpful. It's difficult to extract decisions, for instance, around people. Um, and it's difficult to actually do that more than on an individual basis, rather than, you know, in terms of then collating that on a system basis. We've done quite a considerable piece of work in the last, like, in two thousand and twenty-one, looking at the impact of NDIS on the Office of Public Advocate. And one of the key recommendations that had, had come out of that work as well as the recognition that we needed to have greater resources to address the impact of NDIS with the demands on our office um, in terms of staffing and other strategies around how we manage our casework. But a key recommendation has been the development of a new IT case management system which has received and been treated as a priority for the coming budget submission process, and we've been doing the developmental work around our new system.
So when, when the Royal Commission issued the notice to collect a, a range of data, um, you were not able to provide some data that might point to sort of longitudinal trends and information to be able to sort of track whether there'd been any changes in the nature of applications or the nature of the reason why a person might have decision-making disability. Is that right? You just haven't got that information to do that trend?
No, we, we do that trend by doing, thirty June is when we invest the resources in doing that trend information with data cleansing every year for our annual report.
And, um, would you agree with me that not being able to know the average time that a client will be under a guardianship order is a matter of concern, is it not?
It is.
And having that information may assist you in tracking, for example, how a client might progress during the period of guardianship and whether there's any material changes that warrant, um, the change in arrangements, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Why don't I now ask you a little bit about how people enter the system? And, uh, you've mentioned earlier that one of the functions is to do the investigation. And are we right in understanding that there is any role for the public advocate to suggest or make an application to the tribunal for a guardian to be appointed?
Yes, the public advocate can do that under section ninety-seven one C of the Act, where we, this, we initiate a, what we call a community referred investigation and look into a person's circumstances. And then if we identify there is a need for a guardian or administrator to be appointed, we would make that application to the State Administrative Tribunal. Unless another person or party is making an application that sometimes happens as we're involved in that process. But mostly we make those applications where we determine there is a need.
And i- in terms of the, the process, it, does that process have any, um, step in identifying an alternate garden, guardian at all?
Absolutely.
And how do you go about doing that?
That is done through the investigation, um, by the investigator advocate or senior investigator advocate, looking at who else would be an appropriate alternative. Firstly, we're looking at what least, lesser restrictive option is available, is in fact, you know, and and it's only where there's determined there is a need for a substitute decision-maker to be appointed, that we then move into exploring who is then the most appropriate person to do that. And we will try to identify family or friends before recommending, um, that there, it would be the public advocate.
And is there any process in that initial investigation into concept of supportive decision-making? And what might, uh, be of assistance to a person in making decisions for themselves with support?
To an extent, um, we, I mean, we're always looking to see how we can support somebody not need to have a guardianship or administration order made. We don't have a formal program for supported decision-making. So it's very much up, working with family, working with the person around what, what options they have available to them, um, and, and and then only where there's an identified need for the guardianship or administration application proceeding in that path.
If there's no formal framework in relation to supported decision-making, then what principles are applied to identify the elements of supported decision-making before the step is taken to apply for a guardianship order?
It really comes back to the principles with which we're working in terms of the Guardianship and Administration Act, which is set out in section four and fifty-one of the Act.
Can I, uh, ask you this, that the process under the Act starts with a presumption that a person is capable of managing their own affairs and making reasonable judgments until the contrary is proven. That's the operation of the legislation. It, it's the task of the tribunal to make that determination that the presumption can be, uh, overridden. Does that mean that the tribunal's role is to assess whether a person is capable of managing their own affairs? And also making an assessment of whether a person is capable of making reasonable judgments?
That is a matter for the tribunal to determine.
Does the, if the public advocate is the applicant for an order, does the public advocate bear the onus of proving both incapability of managing affairs and, and incapacity in making reasonable judgments?
No, there would be a reliance on medical evidence being provided to the tribunal.
In terms of the reliance on medical evidence, who obtains that? If the application's made by the public advocate, would you commission that evidence?
We would attempt to seek that evidence from treating professionals. If, um, at the present time, I, the public advocate doesn't have the power to compel people to provide that information to the public advocate. Um, however, if we are unable because of a, um, treating professional's view that it's confidential information, they're not prepared to provide it to us. But there is enough sufficient evidence from our point of view that there are significant concerns, the matter should be put before the tribunal. We would make the application and it, then the tribunal can make orders to seek those medical reports and information.
What sort of medical evidence is required to override the presumption that a person is capable of managing their affairs or making reasonable judgments? What type of medical evidence is usually required?
The tribunal, the State Administrative Tribunal, have a standard medical form that they refer to treating professionals to provide. On other occasions, they are, they utilize written reports which have fuller assessments. So it is a mix of, um, information that may be put before the tribunal.
And is there an onus of proof as to what level of proof or how the presumption is overridden?
That is a member, a decision for the tribunal.
And, uh, is the process one that, uh, requires the person about whom the application is made to have the opportunity of presenting their own evidence in relation to their capability to manage their own affairs or make reasonable judgments?
The person for whom the application is being made should be notified of the need, of the fact that there, there is an application before the tribunal, by the tribunal?
That's been told, there's got to be a hearing or there's going to be this issue to be resolved in the tribunal. Uh, uh, people notified that they might need to bring some evidence along? You know that?
Uh, not, the, the serving of notice is about the tribunal hearing, I should say. Um, if our office is in, has a referral or if our office has been involved in making the application, um, we would be letting the person know that with the application is being made.
What information is provided to the person if it's those circumstances that you just referred to? What information would they get? What would they be told about the process?
They would be told about the nature of the hearing, the reasons why we are proceeding, to the extent that that can be communicated to the person. Um, and, uh, and it really comes back to some variability of the judgment of the investigator in terms of the circumstances of the person, what they can understand. Um, and, uh, and the experience of the investigator in working with the person and explaining that information to them.
Are people told that they can be, uh, legally represented in the tribunal process?
Uh, I'm not sure that everyone is told every time that they can be legally represented. Um, I'm sure that most of the investigators would say that, as a matter of course. But it's, legal representation hasn't been a feature of the way in which the tribunal has been established.
What about not a legal advocate but an advocate? I think you've been in the room and you've heard Christine Grace's evidence from Kin Advocacy and their role. Would people be routinely told that they could access a service like Ms. Grace's service?
Uh, I think it comes back to a case-by-case basis in terms of what the circumstances are.
Is there any evidence in your experience, uh, presented to the tribunal that's beyond a medical assessment of the person in ti- in terms of capacity to manage financial affairs or make reasonable judgments? So tribunal routinely get evidence other than medical evidence?
Um, I'm using medical evidence in a very broad term. So it would be service provider reports that are also made to the tribunal, um, even though, uh, uh, so there's a lot that's taken into account. There may be different professionals providing assessments of the person, functional assessments that we've been able to obtain through um, NDIS or other means, other reports to other courts at times.
But the tilt of all of this evidence is to overcome the presumption that a person's capable.
Yes.
So we write in understanding that the tilt or the direction of this evidence is not to really test capability, but to identify all of perhaps the weaknesses or deficiencies for a person at that moment in time to demonstrate that they are not capable of managing their financial affairs or making reasonable judgments.
Yes.
The nature of the evidence, isn't it? So for a person going through that system, starting with the presumption of capability and being faced with a lot of medical evidence in relation to not being capable, how does that strike a fair balance in terms of power and decision-making for a person who the orders might be made? How does that work in the tribunal?
That is really a question for the tribunal.
Well, if the public advocate is the applicant, do you take steps to even up the power disparity in most circumstances or provide support to people?
It will depend on each case and, um, the supports around a person if there are any other supports that are present for the person. And certainly there are times where we may try, try to obtain other advocacy or independent legal advice for the person, but it's not on every occasion.
What would be the occasions in which you would take those steps to find legal, opportunity for legal advice or independent advocacy? What would be the type of occasions?
I'm thinking of a case where we have a man who's got a range of, um, psychiatric issues, at great risk, has had major issues with his local council, potentially a house being demolished, already involved in lots of other legal action. So in that sort of case where we're looking at our, our role, is there, you know, it may be helpful for him to be independently represented to the extent that he can instruct, um, a lawyer to be involved, you know, in, on his behalf.
Right. Want to ask you some questions now about your office and resources, I think we've touched on that. So you've got eighty-five full-time equivalent, uh, employees in your office, is that right? And not all of them, uh, operate with the delegated authority as the public advocate. So some are investigators, is that right? And some are involved in the policy work of your office?
Yep, yep, yep.
So how many in total would the, would, of the eighty-five would comprise people who have that particular responsibility as the public advocate acting under your delegation?
When I talk about the eighty-five, it was eighty-five, it was the thirtieth of June. So in terms of that establishment, we have fifty-eight positions which are operating as guardian um, under my delegation. That doesn't include, and in addition to that, we have to manage guardianship as well as a senior policy officer who's also involved in some casework for whom I give a personal delegation as and when it's required.
And are the staff located throughout Western Australia?
No, we're centrally based office.
Uh, do the staff travel throughout the very large state of Western Australia?
Yes, they do.
How many First Nations staff do you have?
None.
How many staff are people who identify as people with disability?
That's an interesting question, um, because it's not a statistic that's available.
You don't collect that information?
It's collected by our HR area and it's up to a person to self-identify.
What would be the average caseload for, uh, a person holding the delegated authority from you to act as a guardian? How many would, uh, the caseload be on average?
It's currently high because of the vacancy rate within our office. And so current average based on the number that we reported to the commission in our submission would be seventy-one across senior guardians and guardians.
And, uh, in terms of that seventy-one, so one person would have to exercise the decision-making power, be it plenary or limited decisions for seventy-one people at any point in time.
Yes.
Do you think that's a sustainable caseload?
It is, it, it is a high caseload and no, it's not sustainable.
What should be the, uh, caseload that you think is necessary to discharge the duties of the guardian, which is to act in accordance with the opinion of the person with respect to their best interests?
The caseload ratio that has been considered by Treasury in terms of allocations to our office is at fifty-five per guardian on average, noting that we do have in place some team structures where we have higher numbers of people allocated, where we have a monitoring team working with people who are in facilities, in particularly aged care facilities, some long-term disability group home situations where their situation is relatively stable and most of the decisions relate to their treatment. So.
Okay, thank you. We asked you about staff training and you've set out at paragraph seventy-one to eighty-two, the training. So the, there's some initial training on induction, so when somebody commences, they'll undergo some training. In addition to that, there are occasional seminars and attending the, uh, AGAC conference, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And then i- in terms of looking at the subject matter of the training, am I right in making the following assumption? That there is no specific trauma-informed training that's on offer?
Correct.
There is no specific training about the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities?
Correct.
There is no, uh, specific training on how and what a restrictive practice is?
That's not so.
What's the training in relation to restrictive practices?
We've taken training on restrictive practices through both the induction as well as through our guardianship team meetings. It is part of the, um, uh, we have a practice standard, so that is something that is utilized in discussion with guardians.
Uh, I couldn't see anything in the material to indicate that there was any particular training on understanding power, the use of power and where there may be imbalances in terms of how power operates between a guardian and the person for whom they're making decisions. That'd be right?
There is nothing specific, but I would believe that that is covered in general, in a general way through our induction.
There's one reference in paragraph eighty G to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander cultural awareness, but that's a, a seminar, is that right?
It's an online training, um, which has been developed by the Public Sector Commission.
And in terms of First Nations, you say in the statement that O P A is at the start of a new cultural awareness journey. That's paragraph eighty-eight. What does that mean?
It means that we, the department has, we're part of the Department of Justice. We're part of the department's reconciliation action plan. Certainly the need to do work better in a way that's culturally safe with the First Nations people is well embedded in that strategy. We have been working, I am on the reconciliation action plan committee. We have been working through and have a draft Aboriginal Cultural Capability Training Strategy that has been developed by an Aboriginal controlled organisation, controlled organisation. That strategy is in its final stages and expected to be implemented in twenty twenty-three. And that will be tailored to specific business areas such as our own office as well in terms of our training needs. It will be delivered by an Aboriginal culturally, um, Aboriginal community-controlled organisation. Uh, and the other part of our journey is, I mean, it's part of the reconciliation plan. We've, there's also recognition that we need more Aboriginal liaison officers across, you know, ensuring that we've got a spread across the department.
Well, there's no Aboriginal liaison officers employed by O P A there?
At the present time, no.
Have there ever been Aboriginal liaison officers employed by O P A?
Not as an, uh, Aboriginal liaison officers. Uh, there have been guardians appointed who have been First Nations people. We have also had people, um, participating through the Aboriginal Public Sector Commission Aboriginal Traineeship Programme.
You've been listening to some of the evidence today about cultural safety and some of the concerns raised by advocates in relation to culturally safe practices, understanding the historic experience of First Nations people, particularly in Western Australia, understanding soul and generations and the need to understand respect for culture and country. Is this new programme that's developing going to specifically address those issues?
It will certainly go some way towards that, but we clearly have more to do within our office in this area.
What particular do you think you've got more to do in your office in this area?
Uh, I certainly think employing an Aboriginal liaison officer or more than one is going to be very important for us moving forward. It's about the difficulties in terms of, um, the resources constraints and how our focus has needed to be. Huge demand that we've had in my whole term as public advocate. We've had every year an increase of appointments of ten to twelve, up to fifteen percent. Net increase thirtieth of June each year. So there's been an ongoing, um, ongoing work done to address that caseload issue with staff within the office. And at the expense of us losing sight, I think of some of the other supports that we've also got to put in place within the office to do things better. And that includes Aboriginal liaison officers.
Well, part of this, um, be a deep dive examination as to why Aboriginal First Nations people are disproportionately represented i- uh, in the guardianship system?
It could be. I, I would like to think, I mean, you're raising it today, um, and certainly I'll give more thought to that.
Thank you. Want to ask you about the concept of best interest. That expression appears in the legislation. And, um, does it include, among others, encouraging people to participate in community life, to care for themselves, make their own judgments as far as possible, but also to protect the person from neglect, abuse and exploitation?
Yes.
And in terms of what that actually means, how do you strike the balance between participation in community life, caring for themselves, making their own judgments against this, uh, strong protective flavour that comes through the legislation? How is that balance struck in applying a best interest approach?
It comes back to case-by-case considerations and I think it's, it's clear that there will be some decisions that we will be very proactive with. Albeit, um, we should be, for instance, under the legislation, treatment decision-making is very broad. So guardians appointed to make treatment decisions, technically making decisions or should be giving consent on behalf of the person for everything other than over the counter prescription medication, albeit that, except where treating health professionals are making urgent treatment decisions. In reality, there may be areas within the office where treatment decisions are routinely sought well by various facilities, such as some of the aged care facilities and through some of the diligent monitoring by the guardians. But in other situations, it will be about what, where, where do we really need to be making a significant treatment decision?
You've heard the expression dignity of risk being used today and we asked you about dignity of risk. And you say that that term is not currently explicitly used in O P A's documented practices as O P A's practices are based on the language of the Act, which is balancing risk with best interests. Does that mean there's no place for an approach based on dignity of risk in the Western Australian scheme?
I think in reality it's happening.
Have, uh, the staff been trained with respect to the concept of dignity of risk and how it will be applied in practice?
No.
In terms of the language will and preferences, uh, you've heard that expression used today. Uh, the legislation in Western Australia doesn't pick up the concept of will and preferences, does it?
No.
How does will and preferences sit with the concept of best interest and striking a balance between risk and personal autonomy?
I think the language we are using is still in terms, mainly in terms of views and wishes of the person. Um, and that is how that balance is struck.
We've heard, and again, I don't want you to comment on the particular case, but we have heard this morning in Clara's case that she didn't like living where she was. So her wish was to live somewhere else. And she certainly expressed a preference in relation to that. What happens in practice if a person's wishes don't coincide with what the guardian considers to be that person's best interest? How's that resolved?
Again, it would be on a case-by-case basis and consideration of the circumstances in which that person is, person is making that request and what the potential options may be immediately or into the future. So.
Is it difficult for the, uh, staff who are discharging this very important function as a guardian to make best interest decisions if they're generally not hands-on? And I think you've said that at paragraph one hundred and three, that their role is not to be hands-on.
It comes back to how we collect information, um. You, the, the commission has earlier commented today about, um, I think in observation elsewhere about, you know, not being case, you know, not case managers. We are not coordinators, we are legal decision-makers as a guardian. Um, and it is about gathering information in the best way we can in the, in, and weighing that up in the particular circumstances.
But the delegated guardians are expected to visit a person within one month of the orders being made, is that right?
Yes.
That doesn't always happen?
No.
Thereafter, if they make that first visit in the month, is there any obligation in relation to the frequency in which any visits or personal interaction will occur?
Ideally, every, as a minimum, up to a year. Um, you know, every year a person should receive a visit, that's obviously.
Once a year.
Once a year.
What's the purpose of a visit once a year?
Seeing the person, talking with the person, talking with their service providers if they're available, seeing their situations.
That, that would allow the person to see how a person might be travelling on that particular day. It doesn't give you a, a clear understanding of how the person's, uh, capacity might have evolved or fluctuated or changed during the course of the year, does it?
No, but there will be some people where we're seeing there is more frequent interaction.
And the office doesn't keep any data on the frequency of visits or the number of visits, is that right?
We keep some data, as I explained in the submission, but it is limited in what we can extract in a meaningful way.
And you say at paragraph one hundred and fifty-three, that guardians aim to gather the views and wishes by speaking directly. But, uh, if they're not going on a regular basis in person, then are there other ways in which you expect the communication to occur? Through phone calls or relying on other people? What happens?
Um, there is, there is certainly a, um, contact at times with service providers. Service providers will contact us, family will contact the office, the public advocate. Others, treating professionals will contact the office. Um, so it really depends on the individual circumstances as to how we know what's happening in relation to that person's.
How does then, um, your offices manage conflicts of interest? So if, for example, you're getting information from service providers, if you're getting information from family members where there may be conflict in families, what's the, um, way in which conflicts of interest are managed?
We are involved in situations where the public advocate is appointed because of the conflict between family members. And that is often in relation to things like contact, um, between, in having contact with a represented person, say, in a who is now living in a facility. We would put to, we would try to work with the family to see if in fact we need to put in place, if we can work informally around what contact arrangements might be by contacting individual family members around those arrangements, also seeing what, what the wishes of the person are about that contact to the extent that we can gain those wishes from the person. We would also seek to, um, in some situations, determine that we need to put in place a formal arrangement because it's clear that the animosity or the difficulties that families have had that have led to the public advocate support are easily resolvable and.
To form, what formal arrangements?
That would be putting in place a contact plan, so certain people can visit on a certain day and other people visit on another day, and that's agreed, and then that's reviewed periodically.
I want to ask you now about the role of the guardian in, uh, violence, abuse and neglect or exploitation of a represented person. You've said safeguarding is the responsibility of the service system rather than one dedicated agency in the statement. But you've also said that when O P A becomes aware of an allegation that a represented person has experienced violence, abuse, neglect or exploitation, and inquiries conducted in collaboration with service providers and other stakeholders having day-to-day access to and or responsibility for the represented person. Can you, uh, assist us in terms of what the nature of those investigations would be? And I think we've asked you on how many occasions have investigations of that time, uh, type arisen in the past year? Do you want to speak to that?
I think in the first instance, it's about establishing whether or not it appears to be a criminal matter which should be referred to the police. In which case the reference, the referral would be to the police rather than necessarily being the ones undertaking, um, that investigation. Um, and if the police, if it's not a matter where the police need to be involved, then it would be making inquiries of the circumstances and, um, making some judgments.
Anything else in?
Well, the practice standard outlines, um, a range of things where we need to have discussion, we need to consider how we're going to ensure the safety of persons. We sometimes go, I mean, work with some very complex situations where we may be going out trying to see family members with the represented person in the home with backup support where necessary as well through, um, with other service providers, trying to see the individual person is important and ensuring that we've heard um, their, their views on what's happening to the extent that we can, trying to work with family where, or others in those situations. So that we are putting in place some protections, some, and ways of making further assessments um, and, and responding.
Your statement indicates that in the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two that there were over two thousand new investigations carried out. And, um, one of the key areas concerned allegations of financial abuse, particularly for older people living with disability, is that right?
That relates to matters rather than people, which has been referred.
Uh, sorry, uh, so two hundred and eighty-three people?
Yes.
But two thousand, over two thousand new investigations.
Yeah, we're referrals from tribunal in relation to.
We're at paragraph three hundred and thirty.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. So, um, so when these investigations are undertaken, right, what is the caseload again within the office for the investigators to undertake these types of investigations? What can you tell us about that?
Now, we're very careful in the annual report to talk about alleged financial abuse because our role is around looking at the information. We don't necessarily, we don't substantiate the abuse. The concerns around what's happening for the person's circumstances is sufficient that it is, it is information that's been provided to the tribunal. So we don't, I mean, the appointment of the public trust, with the appointment of the public trustee, that is a matter then that in terms of those set applications, where they would then need to consider what further action they would take in relation to the financial abuse.
Um, I know we're covering a lot of territory quickly, but I want to ask you about, uh, coming back to the duration of the guardianship orders. We also asked you how many in the previous twelve months have been revoked and you told us it was a hundred and forty-five. Are the circumstances of those orders being revoked because of the change of circumstance of the represented person? Or do they mostly come about because there's been a challenge or an application for review by a family member like Anthony, for example?
It's a mix and there are times, we, the public advocate makes a report for every review of a guardianship order. And we consider as part of that process whether or not there's another option that has emerged, which and certainly if we've identified, um, that there's a more appropriate appointment by family, then we will make that recommendation for the redaction of the public advocate.
So even with the hundred and forty-five revoked orders, that does not mean that that's a hundred and forty-five people who no longer have a guardianship order. Some may not, but others may, uh, have a, a replacement.
That's right.
A family member or another person to provide that function, is that right?
Yes.
Is there anything in the system that, uh, requires the public advocate to assess fluctuating capacity and to form a view that a person's skills and capacity has changed so that they can make decisions for themselves now? Do you have that function at all?
It's not a function, it's a judgment call. Um, and I've certainly become, I was involved myself directly in a case this year where somebody's capacity was deemed to have, um, been, has, you know, the ability to make decisions for themselves was deemed that they did have the capacity. We had the evidence coming back to us from the same treating team that demonstrated the person's capacity had, had, um, you know, it was no longer of an issue of concern to them. And so in, an application was before the tribunal, it was made by another party. Um, and that, in that sort of case, clearly there was evidence that had come to light. It showed that the person did have capacity and therefore the orders could be revoked.
So you've said also that it's not part of your officer's function to support people who are represented to build skills or to assist them to develop capacity. And I want to ask you in that context, whether you've seen any changes with the N D I S now in Western Australia. We heard Christine Grace say that her observation is that the arrival of the N D I S has increased it increased the numbers of applications. But if we work on the basis that the N D I S is about choice and control and about supporting people, we would hope in a way to develop that independence and autonomy. Do you see anything in the arrival of the N D I S with the numbers of new applications for guardianship? And is there apparent conflict that what the N D I S seeks to achieve is actually creating the opportunity for more guardianship applications to be made and applied?
There's certainly a tension there, and I think it is while, and if I can just say this, in terms of N D I S planning, there's now more capacity for people to have some funding to help them actually factor into their N D I S plans to help them build capacity. And how that capacity is built will determine what, be determined by what sorts of things the person wants to do. So that's happening at an individual level. But in terms of a systemic level, I think we're still on the wave of transition with the N D I S impact impacting on Western Australia. We're full, full transition to be a new bilateral scheme negotiated over the coming year. But we have certainly seen an increase in applications coming forward. I think it's twofold, that there sometimes are concerns about people who've had very long-term psychosocial problems who have not been able to access support sufficiently in the past and that they do not have family support and need additional support. There are other people where it is becoming, it is complex or you have aging parents. And the, the complexity of the N D I S processes is hard for some to navigate. And that is inevitably resulting in, I believe, work coming into our office or appointments as guardian. Hopefully, in the longer term, we may be able to find lesser restrictive options. But it's certainly, N D I S has certainly impacted in terms of new appointments as the public advocates, as we demonstrated in the work that we did last year.
If we take this assumption that the N D I S has the objective of supporting people with disability to become independent, including having autonomy decision-making, does it follow that existing legal systems like guardianship and administration laws also need to shift to reflect models of supportive decision-making and models that enhance a person's independence?
I would say there's always going to be a need for a substitute decision-making model in that, in that, in that paradigm. And certainly there may be more that can be done, and, and I'm sure there is more that can be done around supportive decision-making, but I think there's, we've seen the work happen in Victoria with the development and legislative reform that has embedded supportive decision-making. What we don't have is any evaluation of the implementation of that and how that's working in practice. I would be keen that any supportive decision-making framework that sits alongside the substitute decision-making framework, again, doesn't become overly bureaucratic and complex because otherwise we're creating a lot of systems around people. And at the end of the day, we need to, I mean, we want to maximize people's autonomy. We also want to maximize their opportunity to use the funds in an appropriate way to support them best.
There, there's been one review of the Western Australian Guardianship and Administration Act. And that, I think, was published in November twenty fifteen, is that right?
Was tabled in the Parliament on the second of December two thousand and fifteen.
And there were eighty-six recommendations in relation to the Western Australian Act, is that right?
Yes.
And in terms of any changes that have occurred in Western Australia, and I accept your statutory role and you may not be able to comment on policy changes. Do you think that there are aspects of the Western Australian Act that are ripe for reform?
Well, I would agree that there is certainly a large number of the recommendations from the statutory review in two thousand and fifteen that would still be advantageous for reform in Western Australia. The one, the area that has proceeded to legislative reform has been in relation to medical research. There's also a need to embed in our legislation the rights of people in relation to the U N Convention. So that is something we don't have currently in our legislation.
Western Australia doesn't have a Bill of Rights or a Charter of Rights. And Western Australia doesn't have a mechanism at present for taking the rights in the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability into Western Australian law. Is it your view that, that the suite of rights in the C R P D need to find their way into Western Australian laws like the Guardianship and Administration Act?
Yes.
And if that happened, and we're in the hypotheticals now, what material or practical difference do you think that that would make to the way in which guardianship and administration operates in Western Australia?
I think that's a very large call.
That's my last question, by the way.
It would certainly strengthen our rights approach. I think we're strong in the sense of protecting people. But our legislation has, beyond the statutory review, we have and the introduction of enduring powers of guardianship and advanced health directives in two thousand and ten. We haven't had significant reform in terms of the Guardianship and Administration Act. So there's obviously, with the work that's happening before the commission, I think that's going to certainly strengthen the need for consideration as to what reforms required to our existing legislation.
Right, misled you, it's not my last question. In that respect, have you followed the work of this Royal Commission in relation to the round tables that the Commission held in at the end of May and beginning of June? You're aware of the Royal Commission's work? And the other question, I want to come back just in terms of staffing. I think I asked you about the numbers of First Nations staff and also staff who identifies people with disability. Do you know if the Western Australian Government in the public sector has any target for the employment of people with disability, particularly in agencies where the rights of people with disability are very much part of the duties and functions of the relevant agency?
Yes, Public Sector Commission has identified targets, I think from memory. I think it's in the order of at least sixty percent for people of First Nations. And for people with disability, I think it's in the order of around three percent, I'm not sure.
And would those targets apply for your office as well?
As part of the Department of Justice, yes.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. I'll invite my colleagues to ask questions they may have. Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you. Because just reviewing the supplementary statement that you've provided with regard to Calara's case. Can I confirm with you, there appears to have been only three meetings between the Guardian looking after Calara and Calara itself from the period of time, August twenty fifteen, until she exited guardianship in twenty twenty-two, is that correct?
Can you refer me to the paragraph you're looking at, please?
Well, I've basically gone through the whole document.
Right.
I elucidated the number of times in which you said there was a meeting. It was apparently a meeting between the Guardian, Anthony and.
I think it's at paragraph seventy-three.
Yes. There was a meeting between the three, and there was a subsequent tour of the facility. So I presume that counts as a meeting, so I just. Let's get the relevant spot on.
No, I would just need to clarify that the sixth of August two thousand and fifteen meeting was with Clara and Anthony at Anthony's home after the appointment of the Guardian.
That's one.
And then twenty-fifth of July two thousand and seventeen was when another Guardian from the Office of the Public Advocate visited Calara at the facility. And then there was a telephone contact on the eleventh of January, a telephone meeting. But there was also telephone contact through N D I S planning meetings as well where Calara was, the Guardian was on, on the line. But yes, there's face to face, there were two, there were two occasions.
Only two or three in seven years, do you think that that is a sufficient service for someone like Calara?
No.
Medical com, was quite medically complex. Look, I just wanted to also compare what took place to make the determination about Calara's accommodation in twenty fifteen and the practice guide. The practice guide indicates that at four point three, a delegated guardian would only consent to non-domestic style accommodation when all other options for providing appropriate support have been exhausted. Would you agree that there was only about a month of investigation of finding accommodation options for Calara? And the investigation appeared to consist of a meeting with you describe as service providers, this is around paragraph sixty of the statement. I think it's paragraph sixty of your statement. I'm sorry, sixty-four, in October, it starts October twenty twenty. There's a reference in your statement to a meeting with service providers, oh, here it is, fifty-six. While Calara was in respite care. There was discussion about Calara living elsewhere from Anthony's home. And there's a reference to a meeting with service providers. And then on September seventh, twenty fifteen, the welfare officer accompanied Calara and Anthony on a tour of the facility. That doesn't appear to have involved the Guardian by the sound of things, so the Guardian never saw this facility.
So are we moving towards a question?
Fifty-seven. Does that look like every option was exhausted for the?
To the extent that there were options, limited options were available, as I understand it, there was.
Option of living in Anthony's home.
That had, that was no longer possible, as I understand it. She had gone into, Calara had moved into respite. And then there, there was a time period and there was limited options. There was, in the area in which Calara lived, there were three options and three, and this was seen as the, it had a place and that was where she could go, it was a psychiatric hostel.
I can say that there was discussion about Anthony wanting to find some other place, but I think he said it would be difficult without continuing respite. I don't think there's any indication that he wasn't willing for his mum to live at his place, provided he was given additional support to do that.
My impression of my file review doesn't agree, you know, I don't concur with that. As I understand too, that Calara and Anthony both visited the facility as well.
Was, as required in the, in the practice guide, was there a transition plan prepared for Calara to transition into the premises? And did it include details of her sharing a room with someone?
Sharing the room was what the facility was able to offer at that time, that was, as I, because I said there was, the transition plan was moving into the facility. It wasn't an overly detailed transition, we had mental health services involved. The Aboriginal specialist unit from Greylands Hospital was involved with helping with that transition.
It says in your practice guide, transition plan should be requested from supporting agencies involved with the represented person. Information should include steps taken by the services to ensure appropriate planning has occurred to enable feasible and smooth transition for the represented person into her, his or her new accommodation. For example, has the person visited the property, that appears to be the case, met with other residents, there doesn't seem to be any detail about that. On how many occasions, if so, on how many occasions, so yes, there might be more than one.
So, Commissioner Ryan, Commissioner Ryan.
And the contingency.
Sorry, if you've got a question, could we please have it, but let, let's not read.
Did the tran, did the transition plan include details of identification of potential risks, meeting with other residents?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'll have, I'll have to ask you to stop unless you've got a question.
Did it?
The transition plan was looking at the facility, talking to the people at the facility in conjunction with the welfare officer from the mental health services who accompanied Clara with that person. And then the decision was made and there were limited options about.
Do you agree with me that a transition plan suggests something and write it? Requested from the provider, that's what the practice statement says, did you request one from the provider?
There isn't a transition plan on the file.
So there probably wasn't one request?
No.
So that part of the transition, that part of the practice statement wasn't met either. And yet there was no further meeting between the Guardian and Calara at her home to see how it was going for seven years. Do you agree with me that there was, there was a further periodic review of Calara's accommodation in the Guardianship Order on the twenty-eighth of July? Did you hear earlier the description of that meeting from Anthony where he said it only lasted a few minutes?
I heard that, but, and you know, I'm not sure how long it lasted, my records.
Would it be normal to have reviewed your authority to determine her accommodation at that time?
That would be an unusually, that would be a short hearing. That normally they would, they certainly schedule hearings for reviews for usually an hour.
Wouldn't you have to justify why that should continue to the tribunal? Given that at the time there were numerous requests from both Calara and Anthony for Calara to move?
The focus of the tribunal hearing was on what authorities, if any, did a garden, you know, was, was there a need for in terms of making decisions on Clara's behalf?
Do you think there's?
Sorry, I think one more question, Commissioner, I remember one.
Do you think that the public guardian around twenty twenty had sufficient information from Calara and Anthony that would have merited a visit to her accommodation, given that she'd made numerous complaints about wanting to move?
Ideally, that visit should have appeared, especially before a new, an upcoming tribunal hearing.
Do you recall?
Sorry, I think.
I just want one more, Mr. Chair. Do you recall, there's a conversation, Anthony reported, that during her periodic review, Calara was actually speaking to the tribunal from her home and with her was a support worker from the, from the facility. And he indicated that that might have, she felt intimidated, there was a massive conflict of interest. My mother spoke to me after she'd seen, and indicated that she didn't want to live there, but she'd said otherwise. Your record suggests that that is one of the occasions in which Calara said she wanted to live there. Do you agree something should have been done about that massive conflict of interest?
Very difficult if, and that's really a matter for the tribunal in terms of how the tribunal is conducting the hearing.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your evidence. In relation to Miss Eastman's questions about the employment of disabled people in your agency, is there a requirement to report on the number of disabled people you have employed?
There's a requirement on the department to report through the Human Resources section to the Public Sector Commission, we're, we're part of the Department of Justice reports.
So in the context of meetings, so for example, the target that you mentioned earlier that in relation to Miss Eastman's questions about the targets of numbers of people with disabilities?
And I have to say, that, that was drawing it from the back of my mind in terms of what that target is.
Okay, but what you said in response to Miss Eastman more is that you couldn't give a number of disabled people, so how do you report? What, what the nature of the reporting to the department?
It's captured through the Human Resources information held around personal information that people have. have um put into the HR and Human Resources System. I'd, I don't capture that information directly.
Okay, so then how can you report on, say, target, meeting target that you mentioned earlier, the three percent?
I don't, it's given as a report through the Department of the Justice, which takes a cumulative report for the Department of Just, you know, a combined report for the Department of Justice.
Okay, well, my final question on that point is, do you not think, given the nature of your agency and providing support or service to, to disabled people, that you would want a great number of disabled employees?
I, I, I agree that, that it would be great to have people with lived experience of disability employed in our office. I'm also very conscious that many of our staff are people, family members of people who have lived ex- lived experience of disability. And I do, am aware that some staff have disability that hasn't been declared, but that is a personal choice.
Uh, thank you. My final question is in relation to Miss Eastman's questions about the NDIS and the rising applications by service providers and others about guardianship. And you said, if, for example, the NDIS is too complex for a particular person, an application for guardianship is appropriate. Would you not, and I'll put it to you, would it not be preferable and a greater use of resources to in alignment with human rights is to develop resources and support, like, and implement supportive decision-making models for that person?
It could be, I have, I mean, at, at this point of time, I haven't had the resources to consider how that could work as an alternative. And I think there's also an onus in terms of the NDIS' role in looking at how they might support people, look at alternative options such as nominee provisions as an alternative to making guardianship applications.
Okay, and to share, bear with me, I do have a final point and question on that. You, uh, many disabled people might find other government schemes complex, um, Centrelink or others. So wouldn't the ultimate aim be to develop supportive decision models that work? So that anyone can understand, um, this is not just about the NDIS, it's about anything that people should be able to understand. Do you not agree with that proposition that a supportive decision-making model would be far perfect, would be?
Well, it would be advantageous to have a suite of options for people.
Uh, thank you.
At paragraph one hundred and seventy-six of your first statement, under the heading, what are the key barriers preventing representative persons from having their guardianship orders revoked? You say that, that due to the nature of the NDIS, a substitute decision-maker is likely to be required on an ongoing basis to consent to services and that creates a barrier to revocation. I'm not quite sure I understand that, could you explain that, please?
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong mission. Um. The observation I would make here is that with the, with the orders, um, the authorities given to the public advocate by the tribunal, historically, the highest number of orders were in relation to treatment decisions. Now, the highest number of orders and functions which I'm appointed relate to making services decisions. Um, and that appears to be really related to um the NDIS and the need for giving consent on behalf of a represented person to NDIS.
Consent, consent to what?
Consent to the services, consent to the NDIS plan, consent to the, consent to the service agreements, giving, you know, signing on behalf of the represented person, the various and multiple service agreements that might be needed around some, for some people.
So a guardian is required in order to provide consent on behalf of the represented person to the multitude of agreements that uh are associated with that person's participation in the NDIS, is that the proposition?
Yes. I mean, it, I mean, obviously through, we may be able to, through NDIS and capacity building, things may change for the person, it, it's something that would be reviewed. But there's certainly a number of people um coming through. Uh, and if we cannot, through our involvement, locate other suitable people to become the guardian or the nominee, then it is likely that we will continue where they have significant intellectual issues, disability.
At paragraph uh one hundred and seventy-three and one hundred and seventy-four, you refer to the NDIS rule that require legal consent from an NDIS, NDIS participant or a substitute decision-maker for the use of restrictive practices. Um, are you conveying there that this is a reason what for the appointment of a guardian? So that consent can be obtained to restrictive practices?
Yes, it has been a feature instance of the introduction of restrictive practices through NDIS.
So what's, what's the practical operation? If somebody makes an application for the appointment of a guardian in order to authorise restrictive practices, who makes that application?
It can be family members, family members are being appointed as well to make restrictive practices. It's the model of um consent for restrictive practices that is currently operating within the WA system. And so the consent of somebody, if somebody is deemed not to be able to give that consent themselves, then, and they, um, the, the application is made to the tribunal, so it could either be an appointment for a family member, appointment of public advocate around giving that consent in line with what the NDIS rules are.
But who makes the initial assumption that restrictive practices are required?
Usually it's a service provider.
A service provider.
Yep. Or family member because of, that, there've been discussions with them by the service provider. It's about the service providers also needing to meet their obligations um in terms of their the regulatory practice with the NDIS commissions.
Yes, that assumes the restrictive practice has been utilised.
That's right, yeah.
Hmm, all right, thank you. Thank you very much for your uh evidence uh today, we appreciate uh your assistance. There's a lot of material covered in your three statements, thank you very much.
Commissioner, the final thing is just the tender of the documents for the Western Australian Public Advocate. Uh, you have a bundle of documents there, could they be marked exhibits thirty point zero zero eight through to thirty point zero two three? And we will circulate a list that sets out the description of the documents uh referable to the relevant exhibit number.
Yes, thank you, those documents can be admitted into evidence with those exhibit numbers, thank you very much. Does that conclude our proceedings for today?
Yes, it is, and today has been um a long day.
Not quite as long as anticipated.
I will start at um ten o'clock tomorrow.
We'll adjourn until ten AM tomorrow, thank you.
The Royal Commission is now adjourned.